Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the preliminary budget for the Committee on Land Use, joint with Technology. This time, we ask that you silence cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. We thank you for your cooperation. Mr. Chair, we are ready to begin.
All right. Good morning and welcome to the preliminary budget oversight hearing for the Landmarks Preservation Commission, Department of City Planning, and Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications, known as DO-IT. This hearing will begin with the Landmarks Preservation Commission before moving on to the Department of City Planning and finally the DO-IT, where the final portion will be held jointly with our Committee on Technology under the leadership of Chair Gutierrez. Public testimony relating to... Public testimony related to the three agencies will be taken after testimony and committee questions when all of the agencies has concluded. If you are here to testify today and have not already done so, please see one of the Sergeant of Arms to prepare a speaking card. If the committee members are ready. At this time, I want to welcome any colleagues joining us as members of the Land Use Committee, including council members. We've been joined by council members Moya Hanks, Bacha, Ang Barely, Chair Lewis, Abreu, and Chair Riley. I want to especially thank Councilmember Riley and Lewis for their leadership as Chairs of the Zoning and Landmarks Subcommittee. Before we begin, I would like to recognize the committee council to review the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca. I am Arthur Ha, Council to this committee. For the benefit of those here today or viewing the livestream, please note again that the public testimony portion of this proceeding will be after all three of the administration panels have testified. If you have written testimony that you would like to submit, you may email it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Councilmembers who are physically present and would like to ask questions should indicate so verbally. Councilmembers joining remotely should use the Zoom raise hand function. Chair Salamanca will recognize members to speak. We ask all participants for your continued patience in the event of any technical difficulties, and Chair Salamanca will now continue with today's agenda.
Thank you, Council. This is a critical time to invest in city planning. Our communities are being deeply impacted by a lack of affordable housing. Their historic lack of investment in communities of color, compounded by the environmental justice issues that affect the health of our youth, must be addressed now. The city also needs to adopt to remote work, and neighborhoods need to become more resilient to climate change. As the administration likes to say, "We need to get stuff done," and we need to build more affordable housing and provide the needed infrastructure now. Yet today, we are presented with a preliminary budget that proposes to reduce the city planning's budget by 10%. The agency already has a staggering 20% vacancy rate. How can DCP get stuff done with such a high vacancy rate and reduced budget? If the city is actually going to plan and provide for the needs of our community, city planning must have sufficient staff and resources to address those needs. We have two objectives today. First, to clearly understand the causes of the high vacancy rate at city planning; and the second, identify the resources that DCP, LPC, and DO-IT needs to make the city more equitable and to actually get stuff done. Chair Lewis would like to make a statement ahead of LPC's testimony.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca. Investments in Landmarks Preservation Commission is investments in what makes our city the greatest in the world, the people and places that make up its history and communities, and that inspire us move into the future. I would like to commend the Commission for its recent work in communities whose history has to be often marginalized, that of Black, Hispanic, LGBTQIA women, New Yorkers, to name a few, and I look forward to a discussion around continuing and expanding this work, the LPC's preliminary budget process to reduce rather than increase agency resources. As we discuss the proposed budget, we must work to ensure that the Commission has the resources it needs to continue its vitally important work. I am especially interested to discuss the disturbing citywide trend of the demolish of designated buildings following unpermitted or poorly executed repair work. The city must make sure that the historic designations are not just symbolic and that they actually fulfill their essential public policy purpose of protecting our city's great heritage. I also look forward to discussing LPC's staffing needs. Headcount and budget for salaries have both been reduced. Given the increase in applications, the shifting of resources towards enforcement actions, and the rise in demolition by construction, it is urgently important that the LPC has the necessary resources to do its work at its highest standard. I am very interested in your testimony today, and I look forward to a dialogue. Thank you, Chair Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair Lewis, and I will now ask the council to swear in our panelists as we begin.
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your names for the record?
Sarah Carroll.
Lisa Kersavage.
Akeem Bashiru.
And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this subcommittee, before this committee, in an answer to all council member questions?
I do.
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You may begin.
Okay, we may begin. Thank you, Chair Salamanca and Chair Lewis. Good morning to you and the members of the Land Use Committee. I am pleased to be here today to speak about the Landmarks Preservation Commission's fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget. I am joined today by Lisa Kersavage, our Executive Director, and Akeem Bashiru, our Director of Financial Management. The Commission's mission is to protect the significant architectural, historical, and cultural resources of our city. The preservation of historic resources revitalizes communities, supports economic development, and contributes to the vitality of New York City. It is my honor to lead the agency in its successful efforts to realize these important public policy and quality of life goals. To date, the Commission has designated and regulates almost 38,000 buildings and sites throughout the five boroughs. As Chair, one of my primary goals is to incorporate equity and diversity in all aspects of the agency's work, particularly to ensure diversity and inclusion in our designations, and fairness, transparency, and efficiency in our regulations, so that all property owners have equal access to resources, technical assistance, and expertise. Since I last testified on our agency's budget, LPC has been focused on several key initiatives: Designating buildings and districts that reflect the city's diversity and tell the stories of all New Yorkers; Transforming the permit process to make it more accessible to all New Yorkers; and developing programs to support small businesses and educate property owners about permitting processes and grant opportunities. Importantly, we are also working with other agencies to advance Mayor Adams' Get Stuff Built Plan, and we have identified steps to improve efficiency and transparency in our permitting process. I will begin my testimony today by giving a brief overview of LPC's budget and how resources are allocated. LPC's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2024 is $7 million, which consists of $6.3 million in city funds and $622,000 in federal community development block grant funds. LPC is fundamentally an agency of professionals. 90% of the preliminary budget, $6.1 million, is allocated to personnel services, and 10%, $862,000, is allocated to other-than-personnel services. Our budget supports the agency's five departments, including the Research Department, responsible for evaluating and advancing properties for designation; the Preservation Department, that reviews permit applications for work on designated properties; the Enforcement Department, that investigates complaints of potential violations and helps owners correct non-compliances; and the Archaeology and Environmental Review Departments, that assist city, state, and federal agencies in their environmental review process. The agency's total headcount in fiscal year, in the fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget is 74. Of the CDBG funding, about 80% is allocated to personnel supporting critical community development-related functions such as surveys, environmental review, archaeology, community outreach, and education, while about 20%, or approximately $115,000, is allocated for our Historic Preservation Grant Program for low-income homeowners and not-for-profit organizations. I will now discuss the work of the Commission that these resources support. LPC's Equity Framework guides our priorities for designations, and the agency has focused on places that represent New York City's diversity and areas less represented by landmarks. In the first half of fiscal year '23, LPC designated the Lesbian Her Story Archives and Julius Bar Building, two sites of significant LGBTQ+ history; the architecturally significant Gompers Industrial High School in the South Bronx, an area where we have few landmark designations; and the Melrose Parkside Historic District in the Flatbush neighborhood of Brooklyn, a distinctive district in a diverse predominantly African-American and Afro-Caribbean community. We have also recently calendared for designation the Linden Street Historic District in Bushwick, and two individual landmarks with important cultural and historic significance: the former Colored School Number Four in Manhattan and the Bronx Opera House. I will now turn to our preservation and permitting operations. Owners of designated properties are tasked with the responsibility of stewardship for the city's significant historic buildings. I believe it is imperative to support them. The key to success in preservation is effective regulation, which requires an efficient, transparent, and accessible process for applicants. Buildings are living, thriving contributors to the dynamism of New York City. Our job is not to prevent change, but to manage it, so that we can ensure these significant buildings and sites are protected and allowed to remain a vital part of our city's continued growth. Our Preservation Department is the regulatory arm of the Commission, and it is the largest department within the agency. Our staff are professionally-trained preservationists who work with property and business owners to help them obtain approval for work that meets their needs and is sensitive to the historic building and context. Each year, approximately 94% to 97% of permits are issued by the staff pursuant to the Commission's rules. The remaining 3% to 6% of the applications are reviewed by the full Commission. LPC's staff works closely with property owners, including meetings and other communications, to ensure they understand the criteria and review process, and to help them put together a complete application and presentation. In fiscal year 2022, the Commission received 12,378 permit applications and took action on 11,423 applications, ranging from restoration and repairs to windows and storefronts, to additions and new buildings. Through February of this fiscal year, we have received about 7,800 applications and are on pace to match or surpass the fiscal year '22 total. LPC is working with OTI to advance a major technology upgrade, an e-filing portal that will streamline our permitting process and improve customer experience. Applicants and property owners will be able to upload, will be able to upload supporting documentation, view the status of the applications at every step in the process, and receive final permits. We anticipate that we will launch the portal at the end of this fiscal year. Once launched, our staff will conduct training sessions on how to use the new system for our diverse constituency, which ranges from homeowners to seasoned professionals. Our Preservation Department continues to develop and maintain resources to help applicants and owners put together complete applications and process permits quickly. We've continued our Open Office Hours initiative, launched as part of our Equity Framework, in which members of the public can virtually drop in for technical assistance and to discuss pending applications with our preservation staff. In summer of 2022, LPC launched a new program, Business Express Service, which is a one-stop-shop for business owners in landmark buildings, making it easier for them to get permits. We coordinated with the Department of Small Business Services and Business Improvement Districts citywide to spread the word about this program, and we look forward to continuing our efforts to support small and local businesses in the new fiscal year. While the risk of demolition or deconstruction of designated buildings is very low, LPC and DOB are working together to analyze threats and assess our policies and practices. The two agencies are in the process of finalizing an action plan that will strengthen enforcement tools that preserve the city's most vulnerable historic buildings. The plan is intended to protect designated buildings that are at risk due to hidden pre-existing conditions, owner neglect, and contractor negligence. It will focus on earlier detection of risks to designated buildings, more robust engineering oversight, increased coordination between the agencies, and more robust community outreach, employing new digital tools and stakeholder outreach. I will now share some further details about the outreach and education work LPC conducts. Outreach and education are also essential to our success. My goal is to make information accessible to everyone, and in a city as diverse as New York, we need to make sure that we are effectively communicating with property owners across the city. Since my tenure began, we have increased community outreach efforts and now place special emphasis on reaching out to communities across all boroughs that have not traditionally been well-represented by LPC. We have also published new educational materials to improve access to important information. This is important for our regulatory work and generates support for designations. Before I conclude, I want to return to the Historic Preservation Grant Program, a modest, federally-funded program targeted for low- and moderate-income homeowners and not-for-profit organizations to help restore and repair the facades of their landmarked buildings. In fiscal year '22, the program awarded two grants to homeowners in the Bronx and Brooklyn, and one to a not-for-profit institution in Brooklyn, for amounts ranging from $30,000 to $36,000. The homes are located in Bedford-Stuyvesant, Brooklyn, and the Monida Street Historic District in the Bronx, respectively. The institution is the Brooklyn Sunday School Union, within the Brooklyn Academy of Music Historic District. In fiscal year '23 thus far, LPC voted to award four grants to homeowners and one not-for-profit institution, for amounts ranging from $25,000 to $35,000. The homes are in Addis Lee Park, Queens, Greenpoint, Brooklyn, Monida Street in the Bronx, and Central Harlem. The institution is the New Amsterdam Music Association, located in Harlem. In summary, we're excited for the future of preservation in New York City, and thank the administration and the council for your continued support and the resources provided in this budget. We are a small agency, and nearly the entirety of our budget is personnel-based. This is a hard-working, dedicated, and professional staff with an outsized impact on our city, responsible for the protection and preservation of its most significant buildings, districts, and sites. Our commitment is that we will continue to do so with the resources provided and strive to do so equitably, efficiently, and transparently. Thank you again for allowing me to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair. I will allow Chair Lewis to start with line of questioning, followed by Councilmember Bacha.
Thank you, Chair, and I just want to thank the LPC for all your efforts in my time as Chair of this committee communicating and educating BIPOC communities across the city on the agency and what you all provide, so I want to thank you on that. If anyone beat you up today, it's not my fault. All right. So, my first question, the fiscal 2024 preliminary budget includes a saving of $113,000 in fiscal 2023 and $226,000 in fiscal 2024 and the out years, eliminating the three vacant positions that I mentioned earlier. Additionally, as of December 2022, LPC has six vacancies within the agency for a vacancy rate of 11.7%. Are there particular titles associated with the three reduced positions, as well as the six vacancies within your budget?
So, yes, there are. The headcount reduction of three is associated with two landmarks preservationist titles and a community coordinator. The vacancies include those three positions, as well as a computer associate, which is critically important for our implementing new technology tools for efficiency and transparency, and our Director of Communications. The sixth vacancy is a member of our research team who is on parental leave and will be returning by the end of this fiscal year.
And are those particular positions you mentioned part of the new program that was implemented?
Part of...
There was a new program that you all implemented, Borough Program?
The office out, the Business Express?
Yes.
Not specifically connected to the Business Express Service.
Got it. What do you project your active headcount to be at the end of fiscal '24?
At the end of...
Fiscal year 2024.
At the end of fiscal year 2024, the headcount would be 74, with six part-time staff, for a total staff of 80 people.
LPC has seen a steady increase in the number of permit applications. The number of work permit applications received during the first four months of fiscal 2023 was 4,234 compared to 4,091 during the same period in fiscal 2022, a 3.5% increase. What factors do you believe led to the increase in the number of work permit applications during the first four months of fiscal 2023?
I think the increase in the applications is good news. I think it's a sign of the economy recovering, and we're actively working to meet the demands of those increased applications.
I think I kind of asked this before, but I want to make sure I add it now. With the reduction of the three positions, how will that impact the increase in the process of applications, now that increased more applications?
Right. So, one of those positions is an LP position from the Preservation Department. However, I would say that over the last year, we had a number of vacancies in that department, and we worked very hard through the... Those positions are subject to the civil service exam, and so we worked very hard to navigate that system and have backfilled all of those vacancies. So, at this point, that department is where it had previously been staffed, so I am confident that we can meet the increase in, the increased applications, which are still not quite at pre-pandemic levels.
And with more communications, I think we're going to have more this year. My last question, I'll hand it over to Councilmember Bacha. Has LPC awarded any historic preservation grants to date of fiscal 2023?
We have awarded four grants in fiscal year 2023 to homeowners, and we have awarded a grant to a not-for-profit as well. And so, the four grants for homeowners are, I got it right here, are two grants in the Bronx and, sorry, four grants, one in Addis Lee Park, Queens, one in Greenpoint, Brooklyn, one in Monida Street in the Bronx, and one in Central Harlem. And then, the institution is the New Amsterdam Music Association, which is also located in Harlem.
Right, which you mentioned earlier. Thank you so much, Councilmember Bacha.
Thank you so much, and thank you for this courtesy. Greatly appreciate it. Last year, a cut was proposed, and collectively, we all fought the cut, and ultimately, that was restored in the budget. This year, an additional cut is proposed, somewhat smaller, but it would result in a reduction of a headcount of three, which in a small agency like the LPC, that's meaningful. Over the past year, in my council district and across the city, we've seen the loss of historic structures due to owner neglect and contractor negligence. Should we not be increasing funding to the LPC to stop this pattern from happening? Additionally, in your testimony, you stated that the LPC and the DOB were in the process of finalizing an action plan that will strengthen enforcement tools that preserve the city's most vulnerable historic buildings. Can you give us a preview of that action plan, and how would these proposed cuts hobble these efforts?
Yes, thank you very much. So, we, I do want to start out by saying that we have seen an unfortunate clustering of buildings that have been put at risk due to owner neglect and illegal work, and also unknown pre-existing conditions. It is still relatively rare when you consider the 38,000 buildings that are under our jurisdiction, but we were also very concerned that it happened in a relatively short period of time. And so, we undertook a study to analyze those threats and worked with our colleagues at the Department of Buildings. We also met with the preservation and community groups, and we met with preservation professionals in other municipalities across the country to understand if they were seeing similar impacts on aging buildings. And we convened a roundtable of engineers to understand what happened in each of the instances. And ultimately, our analysis led us to identify these three primary risks. One is unknown pre-existing conditions, which are not caused by work or neglect. They just are an aging building, and those conditions can be revealed when work is happening. And actually, that's an opportunity to make a difference and protect those buildings or deal with public safety. Illegal work, which is something that is a real challenge, because you can't control bad actors, but you certainly can take enforcement actions, and we have been doing that. I am pleased to say, though, that the illegal work, you know, we've gone back 20 years, and there have only been really three instances of illegal work resulting in the demolition or deconstruction of facades. So, it doesn't appear yet to be a significant pattern, but something we're deeply concerned about and taking action on. And then, the third is sort of the broader category, which is owner neglect and how to pursue demolition by neglect, and that's something that we have always taken very seriously, and we work very hard to pursue it. We, in the case of one of the buildings in those recent five incidents that did have to be demolished, that was a building where we had worked for years, sued the owner, prevailed in court, and despite prevailing in court, the owner still didn't make repairs. The judge issued three orders for the owner to make repairs. Those were still ignored, and despite being in contempt of court, the owner didn't make those necessary repairs. And so, this is a, this is a long process, but something we actively work on. And so, but I would say each of these three distinct causes are not staffing-related, per se. They really are about early, and this is why our plan really focuses on early detection, so that we have the time to get through the legal processes and the court system before we're at a place where the building becomes a public safety issue. It also focuses on more engineering oversight of our applications to help us identify some of those pre-existing conditions, and that is going to be dealt with by changing the process of applications. It's not a staffing issue. And then, a large part of it is also increased coordination with our colleagues at Department of Buildings, and that includes sharing data and coordinating more site visits together and joint inspections. And finally, we really do want to partner with our colleagues in the community who are on the ground, so local council members, but also the community groups and block associations who are the eyes on the street, and make sure that they know what's happening and what buildings are at risk, and we're going to create some digital tools to create that transparency, but also increase communication with them, so that we can benefit from their experience on the street.
Thank you.
I would recognize Councilmember Hanks for questioning.
Good morning. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
I appreciate it. My district is the North Shore of Staten Island. We have many historic buildings. I'm not sure whether they're landmarked as of yet, but do we have any public-private partnerships that we do with development? Because I know in my district, some of the buildings are being looked at as development, as, you know, preserving them, so I just wanted to ask the question, especially in lieu of the disparity with the budget. Is there any work or public-private partnerships with development as of yet?
You know, I think when it comes to designations, really, it's... You know, I think when it comes to designations, really, it's, we have expert researchers and historians and when we designate, we have to ensure the, the accuracy of our information. So, you know, I think that that's something that, you know, even if we do have a sort of a partnership with a private entity, we have to do that work ourself to ensure that it's accurate. In terms, you know, and in terms of permitting, I think that also is sort of something we have to do solely as the eyes, objective and, and expert eyes looking at applications. So I'm not sure that there are opportunities. Yeah.
And I would just add, you know, that we, you know, we have designated a number of cultural institutions, parts of Sailor's Snook Harbor are designated, and I think we try and work very closely with the institutions running those. We try and, you know, sorry, bring awareness about the, you know, there's various grants, tax credits, other kind of opportunities for funding. So we try to be very, very collaborative with those cultural institutions and try and sort of develop those partnerships.
Councilmember Mealy for questions?
Thank you. I just have one question. You said that what would you start doing about buildings that is in disrepair? You would take it over and try to?
So we don't take over buildings, but we work very closely with property owners for all of our landmarks to ensure that they can remain in good repair and that they meet the owner's needs. In cases where buildings are being neglected, you know, it takes a lot of work to work with those property owners. There's often, you know, it's, sometimes it's hard to even find the owners and we've had to go do some creative, take some creative steps to find owners and then to work with them. And sometimes they don't have the resources. So we do partner with other institutions that can maybe provide some funding assistance, but ultimately they are, as landmark owners, responsible to maintain the building in good repair. So we work really closely to help them do that before we have to enter into a lawsuit. But if that's, if, if nothing is happening, we will pursue it legally.
So what is your budget in regards to religious institutions that are in disrepair and neglected and need help? Is there any money set aside in this budget to really help them if you know who the owner is? And sometimes they just don't know how to go about filling out the paperwork, but it's a plight on the dis, on the community because it's in disrepair. So how much of this city budget y'all have? We don't have none?
Well, the budget funds our staff and our staff works incredibly closely with houses of worship. Those, we are-
There's no specific budget for that?
Our budget really is personnel-based. So it's, it pays for our staff to designate, review applications and to assist property owners. And we have a dedicated staff that works specifically with religious institutions that understands their needs.
How many staff just for designated for that?
We have a main preservationist and then a second preservationist who assists, yes. And they understand the unique needs and challenges that our religious institutions are facing and-
Do you have a but, a database in regards to how many churches or religious institutions that do need dire help? That, you have a list now?
We have a list. We have about, and we can get you exact numbers, but it's about two hundred and seventy religious buildings are designated as individual landmarks and about three hundred and seventy are designated within historic districts. So that five hundred something number of buildings is a relatively small percentage of our thirty-eight thousand buildings and sites. So we are very selective. We understand the needs, but we, and when they, we do outreach to them, but we also, as I said, we, we meet them at the site. They have a personal preservationist that they can call if something happens, if they need technical assistance. Some of the technical assistance that our expert staff can provide can actually save money in the long run. So I think we try to be a resource for those institutions.
But y'all probably need more money in the budget to help to get these institutions and historic buildings off y'all's list, right? Do you have enough funding for it?
They're designated and they'll remain designated. We don't have a list of which ones are in disrepair and I'm not sure that there is such a list, but we do know that many religious institutions have smaller congregations and complex buildings and unique needs and we work very closely with them to help them meet their needs.
Y'all historic, right? If it's a historic building, I'm finished. The city is trying now to change over office buildings retrofitted to housing with the historic. If a church wanted to do that, would that be open or any fun?
We do. We, we partner with religious institutions to change the use in a portion of their buildings or to develop a new building on their lot where they have addition, if they have additional lot that is part of the designated site. And then even when religious institutions no longer occupy the building, we do approve new uses for those buildings.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you so much. I need to talk to you.
We're happy to talk to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Mealy. I want to just, before I start my line of questioning, just want to follow up on some of the questions from Councilmember Mealy. Chair, does, do religious institutions qualify for the Hispanic, for the federal communication development block grant?
So we do accept applications from religious institutions. Because it's federally funded, we cannot award a grant on a portion of the building that is used for worship, but we can award grants for other portions of the building. So last year in Bushwick, we funded work to repair a leaning steeple in, at, at the First Reform Church in Bushwick. We paid for first an engineer to do an assessment and then after that, we awarded thirty thousand dollars for a grant to do the repairs and partnered with the New York Landmark's Conservancy, which is a not-for-profit that has a program for religious properties. And they also provided funding for those, the repair of the steeple. And it, you know, it's an incredible success and we're delighted that we were able to participate in that.
Chair, could I ask you something? Is this church and state?
It's, no, so that goes to my next line of questioning. So if there's a church, the actual structure, if it's landmarked, and, and just, just give us some clarity, do they qualify for the grant to fix any exterior?
Yes.
Capital needs and the interior capital needs, they cannot? Or just, can you just explain that?
Right. So we couldn't fund restoration of the sanctuary where they worship, but we could fund the restoration of the steeple on the outside. Or if they have a related community space, we gave a grant to a portion of the building that was, of another church that was used for a daycare.
Okay. All right. With that, thank you, Chair Carroll. First, I want to say thank you to you and your team. Maybe about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we did a landmark in my, in my district at Hunts Point, Monida Street. And I, I know that there were some challenges there, but your team did some research and we figured out, you know, to ensure that they are preserved, that, that block, that neighborhood is preserved. And my constituents are extremely happy with the decision. And it's great to see that they've qualified for these grants.
Yeah, we've now awarded two grants in that historic-
Is that just one homeowner or is it multiple homeowners?
It's two separate homeowners. So last fiscal year, we awarded a grant to, I think it was eight fifty-six Monida Street? Eight forty-one Monida Street? Thank you, Akeem. And this year, we awarded a, a grant for eight fifty-six Monida Street.
Okay. And do you know the, the amount of, of these grants? You don't have to give me per home, but in total?
They were approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars.
A piece?
Yep.
Just to continue on with these, these grants, and I ask this question every year. So you are, the federal government allocates six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Is that correct for the federal communication development block grant?
So the, the federal government allocates money to the city and then we are budgeted six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of that money.
How much does the federal government allocate to the city?
I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, we get six hundred and twenty-two thousand. I don't know how much the city gets.
All right. Is it possible that you can follow up with this committee?
Yes.
Because I would like to know what the breakdown is. Now, in terms of the six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, how much of it goes to actual grants and how much of it goes to your overhead, your personal services?
So eighty percent of it goes to personnel services for community-related functions like survey work and environment-
I'm sorry, you said eighty percent goes to personnel services?
Yep. And so the other ten percent, nine, twenty percent is the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the grant program. And every year, we have awarded as much as we could, you know, we've gone up to a hundred and fifteen thousand. We have not received applications that we've had to reject because we don't have the money. And if we did receive additional eligible applications, we would work with our colleagues at OMB to address those needs.
Eighty percent is four, almost five hundred thousand dollars out of the six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. How many staffers do you have working there?
We have two, three staff that are dedicated to the grant program and they work with the property owners to help them through the application process. They, the bidding process, then we do the bidding process. We award the contracts to the contractors and then we oversee the, we do project management of the work. But again, I want to just be clear that we have not had to reject any applications for lack of funds. So if we did have more applications than we could fund, we would work with our colleagues at OMB.
So if you were to calculate personal services, research and the grant, what's the, what's the average amount that you spend per awardee?
The average amount, it's between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, but if you add, I, I, I'm just trying to understand if it's almost five hundred thousand dollars for personnel services and you have three employees, the average is out to about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per employee.
Okay. So just to be clear, the, the personnel, the money that is, supports our PS portion of our budget is not just for the grant program. That money actually supports community-related functions like our survey work that our research department does, our environmental review work where we do survey and assist with the lead agencies through environmental review, our archaeology department and our outreach programs. So the, the five hundred, near, it's the four hundred and something, the nearly five hundred thousand dollars supports all of those staff.
All right. And, and so last, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Five full-time staff and one part-time staff.
Sorry?
It supports five part, five full-time staff and one part-time staff.
Last year, how many awardees did you have for this grant? Four?
Last year, we had four altogether and this year, we've, so far, we have five.
Awardees?
Yes.
That's great news. Okay. Thank you on that. Want to move on to some other lines of questioning. Want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Brook Powers and Councilmember Sanchez. I'm sorry. I, I want to, I want to speak briefly regarding your, your PMMR, regarding your enforcement. The LPC enforcement actions increased tremendously year over year from thirty-two in the first four months of fiscal year twenty twenty-two to a hundred and thirty-six in fiscal year twenty twenty-three as a result of a temporary reallocation of staff services. Those were the wordings that your LPC gave us at land news. Temporary reallocation of staff services. So what is driving the surge in enforcement actions?
Well, I would say our enforcement, our enforcement program is complaint-driven. So we respond to complaints by the public. And I would say first, that post-pandemic, as people started to be out and about more, people started to notice work and call in complaints. And so that, I think, is what has increased the amount of complaints. And then we investigate every single complaint and as those complaints increased, we shifted staff within the department to invest, to investigate those complaints, to meet those demands.
What kind of actions specifically have increased?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
What kind of actions? So what, what kind of complaints have increased?
So we, we get complaints. We, and, and then if we get complaints and we investigate it and we find that the work is in, work that has happened without a permit or in non-compliance with a permit, we issue a warning letter. And if the application is, if the violation is not addressed after that warning letter, we then issue a summons, which requires an appearance in oath, at oath. And if they don't address it again, it requires, we issue a second summons that requires also an appearance at oath and penalties. But the majority of our, I would say, of our enforcement actions are resolved before we have to take those second and third steps. And, but one thing I would note is that the numbers of complaints and the numbers of actions are, don't necessarily correlate because we may get five complaints for one building and it's one investigation to that building. Similarly, we might do an investigation at one building and find multiple conditions that are in violation and issue multiple actions. So in some ways, the number of complaints, number of investigations and number of enforcement actions varies and they're sort of distinct.
What's the most common complaint?
Oh, windows. I think the installation of windows without permits or the replacement of windows without permits. I think signage is probably also another top one. We can find out the exact work type.
I want to talk briefly about your headcount. How many employees do you currently have on staff?
We currently have seventy-one full-time staff and six part-time staff.
And how many vacancies do you have?
Six.
You have six vacancies?
We have six vacancies. I will note that one of those vacancies is actually a, a person who's on parental leave and is due back before the end of the fiscal year.
You know, I, I, I believe that you provide an essential service to maintain New York City and you have a small budget. And so the concern is that if you can continue to operate without, with these vacancies, OMB may want to eliminate those positions. What is your position on that?
So we have been working very hard to fill vacancies. We are all, the majority of our positions are subject to civil service exams and lists. And so we've been working through that and we filled a, a large number of vacancies that we had had prior to this year. But unfortunately, it is a national trend. We also lost a couple of other positions. We are working with OMB to actively fill the two vacancies that are not subject to the peg, which are critical positions for us. It's a computer associate that is going to help us with our technology improvements for efficiency and our director of communications.
So you have no director of communications now?
Not at this time. We're working actively to fill it.
All right. Do you have any questions, Councilmember Lewis? All right. And then finally, your, your permit applications. LPC has seen a steady increase in the number of permit applications. The number of work permits, applications received during the first four months for fiscal year twenty-three was four thousand two hundred and thirty-four compared to four thousand ninety-one during that same period, which is an increase of three-point-five. What factors do you believe led to an increase in numbers of work permits, applications during the first four months?
Yeah, and I think this is a sign of the economy recovering. So I think it's a good sign that people are, are doing work again. And I would say that we're working hard to meet the, and balance the needs of all of our applicants and meet the demands. We have backfilled all of the vacancies that we had last year in the department that reviews and issues, applications and issue permits. So that department is now where it was before we started having vacancies. And we, we are continuing to evaluate and monitor the increase in applications and the agency's needs and will continue to work with OMB on any needs identified.
Has your vacancy rate made the increase in permit applications more difficult than usual?
I would say last year, the vacancy rate did have an impact on our staff's ability- The, I would say last year, the vacancy rate did have an impact on our staff's ability to process permits as efficiently as they would have in the past. But as I said, we have backfilled all of those vacancies and we're confident at this point that we'll meet the needs.
How big is your backlog for the permit applications?
I'm sorry?
Your backlog? Do you have a backlog?
We don't have a backlog per se. Applications come in on a rolling basis and some can be issued within two days. Some can be issued within 10 days. And those, you know, again, 5% of our applications cannot be approved at the staff level. Those require review by the full commission at a public hearing. So obviously, those take longer. But they're moving on a sort of rolling basis. And the staff issues 80% to 85% of all of the permits within 10 days that are being handled at staff level. And I would like to say that, as I mentioned in my testimony, we have, last year, we had a new need that was funded for, to develop and build an e-filing portal, which we anticipate will increase efficiency immensely, both for the staff and for the applicants who engage with us and thereby increase customer, and improve customer experience.
Thank you. Are there any other members that would like to ask questions? I want to recognize Councilmember Betina Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Chair. Can I just have a brief question? So over the years, there have been several instances, some of which we've worked on together, where buildings that are not calendared, not designated as landmarks have been proposed for demolition and communities have been concerned about that, wanting to take action. So do you, do you have a number of the amount of times that that has happened over the last three, four years, for instance? And can you remind us, what, what is the process to, to calendar a building? Do you think it's fast enough to be responsive to community concerns like this?
Right, and I, I don't think I have a, a number specifically on that. But what I would say is that, you know, our research staff surveys thousands of properties every year and develops an inventory of properties that may merit designation. We also get requests to evaluate properties from the public, which we do. And if those properties are determined to may merit consideration, they're also included in that inventory. And we work very hard to make decisions on which items the agency should calendar. And those decisions are based on whether they fit within, whether they're sort of equitable across all five boroughs, whether they fit within our goals of equity and equitable representation in our designations. And, and whether, what the level of threat is can also be a factor. And how they compare to other similarly, similar building types that are designated. We do an extensive amount of comparative analysis. But all of our decisions are merit-based decisions. And we do act on those as we consider, you know, we first determine merit and do the research to determine merit. We also do an extensive amount of outreach as well with the local council members and owners.
Just because I'm on the clock, my question is really around the timeline.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, once we advance properties to the calendar, we, we calendar and we designate for individual landmarks within one year. And for historic districts, we have within two years to designate from the time that it's calendared. But decisions on what to calendar and what to prioritize are done with the research team and staff and consider factors, including goals of equity and looking across all five boroughs.
So from the time that a member of the public or a community or some, some entity like that proposes a site for a consideration for the calendar, how long does that take to?
We don't have applications for designation. So all designations are commission-led initiatives. So when we, if we get a request to evaluate a property from a member of the public and if we, you know, we do an analysis, in some cases, we find that it doesn't merit consideration. In cases where we do find that it merits designation, it's included in the inventory of the other property, with the other properties that we've surveyed. And among those, we determine.
And what is the timeline from the request to the?
We generally respond within a month. A proposal to look at, or a request to look at a historic district can take longer because we do a more in-depth building-by-building analysis.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up and then maybe Lisa, you can answer both of them. You said thousands, thousands are reviewed annually. What are the, the criteria for properties entering into that list for consideration by the commission?
We, we determine, work with the research department to determine priorities for surveys. And they are looking across, again, as we're now focused on equity across all communities, we've been focusing our survey work on neighborhoods that have been less well-represented by landmarks. We actually last summer did an extensive district-by-district survey in the Bronx because that's a borough in general that is less well-represented by landmarks. And so, you know, we determine, as we do with which items to move ahead with designation, we prioritize which areas we want to allocate resources for survey work.
Yes, I just wanted to note, excuse me, for, once something is calendared, you know, our timeframe for actually moving through the designation process in the last few years has averaged around three months or four months for individuals, sometimes a little bit longer. But as Sarah said, we had that one year. And then districts, we've been doing generally in about six months, although we have the full two years. But it depends on the owner outreach. And we've been trying to do a lot more owner outreach in communities where there aren't as many designations.
And in those communities, as we look at representing areas that haven't been as well-represented, there's also less familiarity with landmarks commission and what it means to be designated. So that outreach is important.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Chair, Carol, and your team for testifying today at preliminary budget hearing. And we look forward to continuing work with your agency. All right, we're going to take a two-minute recess and we're going to bring up the Department of City Planning up next. All right, good afternoon. Now we will continue the land use preliminary budget hearing and hear from the Director of City Planning and Chair of the City Planning Commission, Dan Grodnick, with the Executive Director, Edith Su Chen, and the Chief Financial Officer, David Parish. Before City Planning testifies, Chair Riley would like to make a statement.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca. Thank you to all the administration panelists and my colleagues in the committee and subcommittee in attendance here today. The council's work in land use touches the lives of all New Yorkers. Today, the council exercises its mandate for fiscal oversight over public funds as prescribed by the city's charter. To that end, part of our task today is to assess the work conducted by the Department of City Planning and to ensure the department is equipped to undertake its own important work. DCP is uniquely positioned to address a vast array of challenges confronting New Yorkers, including the need for housing, for, housing and affordable housing, addressing food insecurities, providing reasonable access to public transportation, and protecting against the consequences of climate change. The department has the potential to foster comprehensive, long-lasting, positive impacts on our physical, social, and natural environments and is our goal to realize its potential. However, this can only be achieved through a critical review of its operations. Thank you, Chair Salamanca, for the opportunity to speak. And I look forward to a productive conversation today with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I will now ask the council to swear in the panelists and we may begin.
Panelists, would you please raise your right hands and state your names for the record?
Dan Grodnick.
Edith Su Chen.
David Parish.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and in answer to all council member questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin.
Great, good morning, good afternoon, Chair Salamanca, Subcommittee Chairs Riley and Lewis. Nice to see you, distinguished members of the Land Use Committee. My name is Dan Grodnick. I am joined by City Planning's Executive Director, Edith Su Chen, and our Chief Operating Officer, David Parish. We thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today to discuss the Department of City Planning's preliminary fiscal year 2024 budget. Before we get to our budget items, I wanted to highlight some of the critical work that City Planning has led since the start of this administration and the initiatives that we are preparing to advance into public review. First, I will point to the fact that in 2022, the City Planning Commission advanced and the City Council approved over 12,000 new homes, 7,500 of them income-restricted through New York City's public review process. This is a big deal and enough homes for approximately 30,000 New Yorkers. As we work to take on our severe housing crisis and from many angles, it is important to say that every home we can approve and then see built across our city plays a role in our collective efforts to bring rents down, reduce gentrification pressures, protect tenants, and address homelessness. So I wanted to take a moment to thank you for your critical partnership. We really do appreciate and enjoy it. One way we are looking to create housing and create more affordability is our collective work to make it easier for underutilized office buildings to convert to homes. This is part of the larger agenda set by Governor Kathy Hochul and Mayor Adams through the Making New York Work for Everyone Action Plan to reimagine our central business districts. Advocating for rational changes to the dates of eligibility for office buildings to convert, as well as the applicable geography, along with a tax incentive that would bring permanently income-restricted units to office conversions, is a key part of this proposal and is something that would help us to advance our fair housing goals. We also are very excited about three in-development City of Yes zoning initiatives, which seek to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels, support economic growth, and create a lot of new housing. The first of these initiatives, which we call City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality, is expected to enter public review the Monday after Earth Day. So only a few short weeks away. We also have several neighborhood plans that are already underway. In connection with the four new Metro North stations that are expected to open in the East Bronx in 2027, our Bronx Metro North plan is projected to create 10,000 jobs and 6,000 homes in Morris Park and Parkchester Van Nest. Councilmember Marjorie Velasquez, Councilmember Amanda Farias, Chair Riley, Chair Salamanca, and Councilmember Felice have been extremely engaged and I thank all of you for your ongoing work. Additionally, with significant guidance and leadership from Councilmember Crystal Hudson, public engagement around our Atlantic Avenue mixed-use plan is well underway. This plan seeks to bring jobs and housing to an already transit-rich stretch of this Brooklyn thoroughfare. And launched on the heels of the mayor's State of the City announcement, we're also in the preliminary stages of studying potential changes to areas of Midtown South and Manhattan to ensure the long-term success of the area's legacy manufacturing zones as vibrant 24/7 mixed-use communities. We are working closely with council members Eric Botcher and Keith Powers and also Borough President Mark Levine. As this body knows, we recently announced a new division at City Planning, the Community Planning and Engagement Division. Led by Lara Merida, this group of seven is leading public engagement and community outreach on all of our initiatives to make sure that community voices and needs are front and center as we shape these plans. I will add here in that I used to sit in the seats where you all are sitting. It is extremely important to me to make sure that we do that and we do that right. With support from across the agency and as the division was being shaped last year and working closely with tenant advocates groups, the division built in-house what we call the Equitable Development Data Explorer. The award-winning tool is used by City Planning, the City Planning Commission, and New Yorkers to directly access data about how New York City communities are changing. This tool is the result of a local law passed by the City Council in 2021. I will add that because it was built in-house, City Planning was able to return $500,000 to the city in savings. With a $2 million federal grant, our new engagement division and our Bronx office are presently working with the city's Department of Transportation as we seek with community to reimagine the Cross Bronx Expressway, a roadway that has divided and polluted local communities for more than a half century. We are eager to move this process along with our federal partners. Now, looking internally, City Planning continues to be laser-focused on hiring staff to meet the ambitious goals we've set under your and the mayor's leadership for housing, job creation, and climate resiliency. In the last year, City Planning has hired 74 new staff members. That translates to us hiring a planner or IT professional, for example, roughly every three working days in 2022. It has reshaped and renewed our ranks at all levels and has brought our headcount to 282. Before I turn to City Planning's budget needs, I want to speak about our efforts around the mayor's Building and Land Use Approval Streamlining Task Force, otherwise known as BLAST, which includes 111 concrete actions. DCP is leading approximately 20 of these initiatives and serving as a partner agency on 20 more. And our explicit goal is to provide better, faster, and improved service in our review of applications. For example, we are currently advancing proposals to establish a land use express application process, LEAP, to skip process steps and expedite review for simple projects, reducing the pre-certification period for these projects by more than 50%. Improve our application commenting process to reduce the revision loops between our staff and applicants. Enhance the quality of our environmental review data products to facilitate. Enhance the quality of our environmental review data products to facilitate faster and more consistent analyses. And bolster our menu of digital tools to automate more of the application preparation process, facilitate improved communication through our applicant portal, and provide greater transparency on public applications. Now, for a financial overview, DCP entered fiscal year 23 with an adopted budget of $49.1 million and an authorized headcount of 347 full-time staff positions, of which $34.8 million, 71%, and 178 positions are funded with city tax levy dollars. DCP's remaining $14.3 million budget allocation and 169 positions are funded by state and federal grants, primarily through HUD's Community Development Block Grant Program. The $49.1 million fiscal year 2023 adopted budget allocated $31 million, almost two-thirds of our operating budget, to agency-wide personal services, which include part-time staff, interns, and members of the City Planning Commission, and the remaining $18.1 million to other-than-personal services. In comparison to the fiscal year 2023 adopted budget, City Planning's fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget of $44.3 million and 348 full-time staff hires, staff lines, represents a net $4.8 million decrease, the combined effect of a $5.1 million reduction in OTPS and a slight $318,001 headcount increase in personal services. This $4.8 million decrease in the fiscal year 24 preliminary plan is largely attributed to the completion of work that was funded by one-time federal grants to measure building elevations and subgrade spaces throughout the city and to examine adaptive reuses of outdated office buildings with the goal of converting underutilized commercial space into new and affordable housing, a subject we had the pleasure of speaking with this committee on just about a week ago. Focusing on City Planning's OTPS, the department's fiscal year 24 preliminary budget allocates $13 million to pay for agency operating expenses aside from staffing such as supplies, community outreach, and various contractual services. The OTPS budget contains $5.1 million less than its $18.1 million adopted budget from '23. This relatively large outflow of funding reflects $1.1 million in efficiency savings identified to achieve DCP's share of citywide PEG targets, combined with $4.9 million in temporary funds that expire at the end of this year and are offset by $900,000 in new needs to implement the BLAST initiative, at which, as I noted a moment ago, a series of land use and environmental application process reforms. Shifting to staffing, the department's 24 preliminary budget allocates $31.3 million to PS compared to $31 million in the '23 adopted budget. The $31.3 million figure represents a $318,000 increase for funding for agency personnel and a net gain of one new position. Headcount and associated funding changes include a reduction of seven positions and a reduction of $402,000 in personnel funding, elimination of six tax levy-funded vacancies, and $284,000 to achieve agency savings in line with the mayor's program to eliminate the gap, expiration of one short-term staffing tax levy-funded resource, and $75,000 funded in previous plans that are slated to exit the budget at the end of fiscal year 2023. $44,000 in savings to the city as a result of lower-than-expected spending in City Planning's paid 2022 summer internship program. These seven positions and the associated $402,000 reduction is offset by the addition of eight new positions and $720,000 for the mayor's BLAST initiative. Overall, these combined PS and OTBS budget changes result in a decrease of $4.8 million accompanied by a one-position increase to City Planning's budget, establishing a fiscal year 24 preliminary plan of 348 full-time authorized positions and $44.3 million, of which $31.3 million is allocated to agency-wide personnel services and $13 million allocated to other-than-personal services. DCP will continue to distribute its resources in the most effective way possible to advance the department's work and to meet the needs of all New Yorkers while striving for a bigger, better, and brighter future for our beloved city. Thank you very much, Chair Salamanca, and Subcommittee Chairs Riley and Lewis, and the members of the committee for the opportunity to share that information with you, and of course, we are here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Grodnik. I'm going to start with some line of questioning regarding the vacancy rate. So the average city planner in DCP earns $85,000 per year with a range that begins as low as $63,000 a year. This is below the average salary for comparable private sector jobs and even public sector jobs in other agencies. Other agencies such as DOT, HPD, and DCAS employ city planners at salaries over $100,000 per year, which incentivizes qualified candidates that are interested in public service to go other, that are interested in public service to go other after other agencies and subsequently keep the vacancy rate for DCP high. So do you believe that raising the starting salary for city planners at DCP will lower the vacancy rate and improve agency performance and speed?
Well, first of all, thank you for the question, and it certainly is something that we hear from employees, former employees, prospective employees when considering their options. Certainly, we, the starting salaries for certain titles are, as you mentioned, in some cases even lower than what you mentioned. So we recognize that this is a point of concern for applicants, and, you know, the impact is that potentially we lose people to some of the other agencies, just like you cited in your, in your question. You know, one of the real challenges that we have seen over the past year is, you know, we have been not exempt from the challenges that have been national in scope, you know, tight labor market, and, you know, we, as a result, saw the departure of 73 planners or other professionals in our agency, and we hired 74 people in the year 2022. So for an agency of our size, we hired at a very rapid clip one employee every three and a half working days. So we were working very hard to try to keep up and to make sure that we were able to provide the highest possible level of service, but, but that was a significant, a swing of, you know, about 140 people in an agency of our size was a, was a big shift, you know. So we were not exempt from the challenges that were seen nationally, but we do believe that with our current headcount and where we are heading with training our new people, bringing them up to speed, able to, to, you know, invest in them, that we believe we are now in a much better position than we were in the start of last year.
How many city planners do you currently have on staff?
I'm going to turn to David Parish to answer the specific question because it's about a, a specific subset of our team.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, you can just be considered a mic. Sorry, one second. It's about 172?
No, I will, I will note, if you're, if the question is about current active staff, it is 269 is what we are. Now, our staff is made up of city planners, which is how I interpreted your question specifically, city planners, but we have professionals who do all sorts of different things and we don't call them-
How many city planners specifically? That's what I-
City planner specifically, okay.
It's one, roughly 170.
170 city planners on staff currently right now.
Currently.
And when you hire a city planner, all right, when you hire a city planner, what is the starting salary?
So the starting salary for city planner one, which requires a bachelor's degree and two years of experience or a master's degree, is $55,208.
$55,208?
$55,208.
For a city planner with a master's degree?
Yep.
What's your retention rate with your city planners? How long do they stay in, 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 in DCP?
In the last year, we had significant attrition, as Dan noted. I believe it was, one second.
Right, take your time. I'll give you the right answer here.
So overall, 26% for city planners specifically, it was 24%, so a very significant shift.
So 26% stayed for how long?
This was just attrition in the last year. I don't have the-
What's your average, do you know how, in terms of your city planners, their average lifespan working for DCP?
So I'd have to get you exact figures, and I'm welcome to do that after the hearing. Anecdotally, it's generally two to six years.
Two to six years?
Yeah.
Chair Grodnik, have you spoken to OMB about increasing the, the starting salary for city planners? I mean, $55,000 is extremely low. That's actually the starting salary in my office for an employee. I mean, and so, you know, your city planners play such a, you know, important role in planning for the city, you know, in order to, in my opinion, someone who's qualified with the education that has to pay back student loans, how can, how can they survive off of that salary?
Well, first, let me just thank you again for your identifying that and for your advocacy for this professional context, because you are right to say that this is a concern that has been presented by the folks who have left and certainly by prospective hires. We are, you know, in constant conversation with OMB about how to make sure that we get to the optimal place for us as an agency and enable us to continue to do this important work. But as you, you know, correctly observed, the folks who are coming into City Planning, like a city planner one at $55,208, they certainly can earn more, more elsewhere, and we have seen a decline in the number of candidates applying for these roles. And I will also note that, you know, the people who can take those lower-paying jobs frequently are disproportionately more privileged because they're doing something as a mission-driven effort, and they tend to be more white on the whole. So it is not an area in which it helps our ability to create a more diverse workforce at City Planning.
So the vacancy reduction memo issued in November described a change in the city's hiring process, ending the policy that allowed agencies to fill one of every two vacant positions. Since November, has your agency been enabled by OMB to hire to fill all vacant positions? Or are you still required to provide two vacant positions for every one to be hired?
We're able to hire, and we have been hiring actively and with the support of OMB, and the numbers are really, you know, I, I will repeat them only because I'm proud of them, that we have brought on 74 new people to our agency within calendar year 2022. And if you consider, like, that number relative to the overall size of this agency, it is a, it is a big percentage. Now, the, the good news is we were able to hire people. The, the, the challenge for us, of course, is we need to train these new people, we need to support them, and, you know, our hope is that we will be able to keep them over time, because once we have invested time and energy into our own team, we want them to build a career at the Department of City Planning, stick around for a while, and help us to be able to move applications and the city's own public initiatives even faster than we are doing today.
A city planner gets hired, let's say, effective March 1st, what is the timeframe when they receive or they are up for an increase in salary?
Generally, it's annually, so we have a, a process where we look at salaries quarterly. I think also it's important to note that many titles also have pre-planned increases within them, so we're constantly taking a look every quarter, but we do a review cycle twice a year and with the, the aim of getting folks in annually.
How many levels of city planners do you have? Because when you, when first mentioned, you, you mentioned city planner, I believe, was level one at $55,000.
The civil service title has four levels.
Okay, so the city planners are civil service?
Correct.
There's a civil service title, okay. What is the, what is your new vacancy rate now that you've hired the 70 plus?
So our new vacancy rate is 16%. Now, you, you won't see that in the math before you because I can share with you that we have 17 people who have also been hired, who are currently in the process of being onboarded. So to the extent that there's a difference in the number that you may have and the number that I'm presenting to you, it's because there are 17 new people who have already been hired who are not reflected in that statistic. So our vacancy rate now is 16%, and we were at 19% last year when I came before you.
What is your allowable headcount at the moment?
So under the fiscal year 24 preliminary budget allows us up to 348.
348. And you currently have how much?
We currently have 286 if you include the people that we just hired but have not yet been onboarded. If you don't include them, we would be at 269.
Do you not agree that even if you were at full capacity of 348, because of the complexity of work that City Planning does, that you actually need more employees, more than 348 employees?
I think that we have, the, the budgeted number here, we can do the work that we need to do to be able to advance not just our, you know, ambitious text amendments that are coming to the council, but the neighborhood plans and also to find ways to, to address private applicants that are coming to us regularly. So we, and we still have some hiring to do, as, you know, as you might observe here. So we have some work to do. We hired a lot in 2022. We have more hiring to do. We are hopeful that we continue to hire at the same pace and that we continue to give people a chance to grow professionally at the Department of City Planning, but we're not even at our budgeted headcount, so, you know, so to me, I think we should aspire to get there, and that is what we are trying to do.
All right. My last round of questioning, I'm just going to move around from vacancies to, you mentioned in your opening statement about the, that the Council and the City Planning Commission in 2022 approved over 12,000 new homes, which of the 12,7500, 7,500 of them are income-restricted and which will create homes for approximately 30,000 New Yorkers, correct?
Correct.
Of those 12,000 new homes, how many have actually been built?
Since last year? Since we approved them?
Yeah.
Very, very few of them actually would be built at this stage of the game.
How many of them do you know are in the closing stages with HPD? Do you, does DCP, after you approve, after these projects are approved and rezoned, does DCP communicate with HPD to follow up as to when these projects are actually going to close? Because it's one thing to say we created 30,000 homes for New Yorkers, that's nice on paper, but it's another thing for them to actually, you know, break ground on these projects and move forward.
You are totally correct in that, and I will note that, and this is an important, an important point that I make frequently, which is when the Council and we together change the rules to enable things to happen, that does not allow us to snap our fingers and, and have those units suddenly appear on site where we have approved them. There still needs to be the financial structure at place, putting aside HPD for a moment, but all of the component parts of actually getting these developments built, which include the, the interest rate environment, the presence of any tax opportunities that are presented, the risk tolerance of the individual who is investing this money in the city, it is not, you know, if only if it were just we could snap our fingers and make it all- It is not, you know, if only if it were just we could snap our fingers and make it all happen. We are enabling the thing. We're not actually building it ourselves. As to the HPD question, we are in regular contact with HPD about their projects. And to the extent that you wanna know where we are exactly today on the ones that were approved, we will come back to you and would gladly give you that report.
During the commission, when you are approving your, right before the application comes to the city council, your commission reviews the application, you question the applicant, is HPD present in that, in, in those hearings?
So, if, if HPD were the sponsor of the project, they would be present at the public hearing of that project, which for us comes just before we vote and just before we send it on to you at the city council. At certification and before certification, we are in direct contact with HPD or whoever the applicant is, even if it is a private applicant that is being supported with HPD, Lytech funds, or any other program. We are in touch with them, making sure that they're complying with the environmental rules and regulations, getting them to a place of certification so that they can begin their process officially. But yes, HPD would show up ordinarily to the hearing at the City Planning Commission to discuss their project.
In your public hearings, HPD, they, they, they present, correct? And they're questioned by the commissioners?
Correct.
And I'm pretty sure that commissioners have, at least my Bronx Commissioner, he's very, you know, specific in terms of the AMIs. Pretty sure that they, there's, there's questions in terms of the AMI structure and how that's, that particular project that's being reviewed at the moment, how did they get there? Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, it frequently is a, a conversation that comes up at the City Planning Commission.
What worries me, and I know that this is HPD, and I know that Councilmember Sanchez will have a hearing, so I'm just throwing you an alley-oop so when you meet with HPD. What worries me, at least in my district, when I approve projects, it averages anywhere between three to five years to close on a project. And therefore, what we agreed to here in the council, and what you agreed to, and, you know, when you had your public hearings, is not really what's happening once this project closes. Every year, the AMI changes per the federal government. We have no control over that. And unfortunately, for communities such as mine, which is low-income communities, you know, I am going back saying, we won, this is the rents that we were able to secure, but yet, if they don't close within a, a reasonable timeframe, those rents are, are gonna increase drastically. So, I just want you to please keep that in mind, and, you know, and, and grill them, just like we are gonna grill them here, you know, during this budget process, to be realistic, as to, you know, what is preventing them from closing on projects. And with that, I'm just gonna hand it over to Chair Riley.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca, and thank you to the administration for your testimony today. I think Councilmember Salamanca, Chair Salamanca, really discussed the vacancies. Something that's really concerned the council, the speaker made a note in the city, state of the city that we really wanna address the vacancies across city agencies. So, do you know specifically where in the department these vacancies are?
Yeah, we're closely monitoring that, and we, we work with all of our divisions. So, we are ensuring that we're focused on every team's needs. And in fact, we've invested in an assistant director of recruitment and retention to help us push recruitment. This year, we are holding hiring, hiring panels through the civil service process, roughly, roughly every six weeks. We have done salary exercises to look for promotional opportunities and increased wages. So, we're doing everything we can to recruit and retain as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Chair Gudentek, you mentioned the new committee, Community Planning Engagement Division that you announced. How many staff are proposed to be within this new division?
Seven.
Seven. How does DCP intend to decide which communities the new division focuses on?
Entirely on your district, Councilman. No, that's a joke, that's a joke. We are, we have initiatives that are undertaken throughout the whole city. We've got three citywide text amendments, we've got neighborhood plans, we've got private applications. We have our own responsibility to be support to community boards, all fifty-nine of them. We want to do all of that better. We want to find ways to speak the language of the various communities of New York City. And I mean, like, literally, actually speak the language, and I also mean talk in ways that, you know, demystify some of these complicated concepts that we're frequently engaging communities on. So, the, the real answer to your question is that we intend to deploy this team throughout the whole city, focusing on the, the moments when we really need them to show up, think about ways for us to talk to a specific community about a specific issue, or to plan talking to a specific community about a specific issue, and that is already underway. You know, as, as we're doing our Bronx Metro North efforts, our Atlantic Avenue efforts, and certainly when we are working with you all on our three citywide text amendment, you know, proposals, the way that we do public forums, engagement, and information sessions with New Yorkers, that is really being led by this team. So, it's going to be a, you know, focus them as we need them, but we, we really do need them. It's an important part of our work, and we recognize that.
Yeah, definitely. You, you've been in this, this seat before, and you realize how important it is to have a division like this to communicate with communities, especially over tough projects that we've seen even within the last year. So, I, I really am pleased to know that you guys are taking this seriously and creating this division, and look forward to partnering with that division as well. How does DCP intend to budget for neighborhood capital investments along neighborhood rezonings? So, a lot of rezonings we're seeing now, where we're adding density to a specific neighborhood, but there's transportation needs, there's resiliency, resiliency needs, there's a, a ton of different needs. So, how do we plan on addressing this when we're adding rezoning?
Yes, I think it's a really important point that you're making. And it also is an important point, separate and apart from any specific rezoning that is happening in one specific neighborhood. We need to be thinking about our capital budgeting process and the way that we correct historic disinvestments in various communities, use capital planning to do its own efforts to spur growth and job creation and economic opportunity. That is what the mayor was after when he announced our seed fund, our strategy for equity and economic development, which will be part of all of these conversations, both in and out of the formal land use process. So, we look forward to working with you and your colleagues to best define, and our sister agencies to best define those sorts of projects that will accomplish those goals, both, you know, in the process of a rezoning, but also separate.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may continue.
Thank you. Speaking of equity, now that the racial equity report is a requirement, is DCP actively asking applicants to discuss their applications in relation to the neighborhoods where the project will be located, such as whether the housing they are proposed to build is affordable to Black and Brown populations in the neighborhood? I ask this because the racial equity report released to date have, has a heavy focus on citywide benefits and not the impact on the neighborhoods.
Yeah. So, we, we do ask these questions. Certainly, the applicants have started to provide these reports only as of last June. They were created pursuant to local law of seventy-eight of twenty-twenty-one here at the council, and they were developed as part of the Racial Impact Study Coalition. There are twelve projects so far that have seen them, and, you know, advocates and the coalition called the presence of this tool a significant victory, and as a way for us to allow for a risk map for displacement. And, you know, between this and the community engagement team that you were highlighting a moment ago, we are trying to find ways to advance our work to promote fair housing and equitable development, and we think these are all important tools, and we refer them to the City Planning Commission and to the council for their consideration of this additional information.
Thank you, Chair. As a threat from climate change, such as sea level rise, intense cloudbursts, rainfall, and other hazardous growths, has DCP considered the city long-term development patterns for communities such as Rockaway, Coney Island? I know in the Northeast Bronx, we do have some resiliency issues as well. Do you guys hold this and, and think about this when you are developing?
We do, and in fact, we recognize that there are neighborhoods for which we want to be very cautious about enabling new development. And that is why we have already created six coastal special risk districts in New York City, most recently in partnership with you all at the council in Edgemere and the Rockaways, but it also includes places like Broad Channel and Garretson Beach and others, places which are very susceptible to coastal risks here and where we believe that we should be extra cautious in, and take steps to reduce population as opposed to enhancing it. So, the short answer to your question is yes, it is certainly front of mind as we consider neighborhood plans and certainly individual projects as well.
Just two more questions, Chair. As was discussed last week, we talked about the office conversion, which I believe is an amazing idea, but Chair Salamanca and Councilmember Sanchez brought up a very good point. Right now, the proposal only has five percent of units of affordability at forty percent AMI, and the rest only have to average of seventy percent to AMI, which is eighty-four thousand for a family of three. But the median income of Black and Hispanic households is approximately fifty thousand. That means these units will not be available for the people who actually need them. What does DCP propose to do to make affordable housing actually available to the people who really need it?
I think most fundamentally, we, we recognize that the challenge is here and that we need to find ways to incentivize the creation of affordable housing in connection with office conversions today. There is no incentive to do that. Office conversion gives you a market rate unit, full stop. There is no opportunity for us to be able to deliver affordable housing in connection with office conversions. So, we are supportive of the proposal to create an incentive to do exactly that, because right now, there is none. And with a nineteen-year tax abatement in exchange for a permanent affordability program at the, the rates that you described, we think is an important and significant improvement on where we are today, which is zero. The precise contours of the tax abatement, the AMI levels, et cetera, you know, would certainly continue that conversation with you and our partners up in Albany. But most importantly, to us, we wanted to make sure that there was an incentive to create affordable housing here as part of office conversions, because we see that that does not exist today. It should exist today, and that's why we, we, well, as part of our task force, we proposed creating one. So, that is an, it's, it's a live conversation up in Albany, and certainly would encourage you to, to share your views there.
Thank you, Chair. And one last question, Chair Salamanca. The Metro North coming to the, the Bronx is an amazing opportunity for the people within our community. Has DCP identified a list of priority community projects to complete as part of this rezoning? And more importantly, how is DCP making sure funding will be available to these, to complete these projects? Because our communities cannot take empty promises anymore. And the reason I'm bringing this up is there's an empty lot in my district that fell through from prior administrations, Baychester Square. It's not too far away from the co-op city, Metro North. A huge lot that's owned by MTA, but it's not being utilized right now. I had a tour there with the land use team last week and the community board, and we're just thinking of, you know, comprehensive ways that we can improve the area, maybe some homeownership opportunities and things of that nature. But are we thinking about this along with the Metro North project, being that it's going to add mass transportation to communities that haven't received transportation for such a long period of time? How can we improve those areas with this rezoning?
Well, the, the short answer to this is yes, yes, yes. We definitely see the urgency of making direct city capital investments to go along with significant changes that we anticipate. That is an ongoing conversation. We are having this conversation now with sister agencies about what should be included, what we need. We wanna have this conversation with you, with the community. This is a really important part of the equation, and the city should not make empty promises either. This is a real opportunity for us, and there are a lot of infrastructure needs in and around these stations, even today, before you have Metro North coming. We see that we are eager to do thoughtful engagement with the communities and also thoughtful engagement with the agencies that have the projects and have themselves identified significant needs, to be able to deliver a real opportunity for the people of the Bronx here, not just through new stations, which itself is extraordinary, but also through city investment to deliver a real chance of success for housing, job creation for the people of, of the Bronx and beyond.
Thank you, Chair. You have been amazing in this position. Communication and the way that you communicate with other members in the Bronx, we truly appreciate it. And we're looking forward to partnering with you on many more collaborations to come. Thank you, Chair Salamanca.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Now, we will recognize Councilmember Hanks, followed by Chair Riley, I'm sorry, Chair Farrel Lewis, followed by Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca. I want to associate my comments with Councilmember Riley. Being from Staten Island, we are the bookends of, of some really challenging districts that are, that often have been overlooked when it comes to investment. So, I just wanted to drill down a little bit on the coordinating the capital planning and city planning. How did the Department of City Planning select neighborhoods to focus on when it comes to looking at neighborhood capital investments alongside neighborhood rezonings?
You know, the, the process of identifying an area that would be suitable for a neighborhood rezoning is a complicated one, and it is a number of factors, including the existing land use pallets, the opportunities that the city sees if we were to change it in any way, the partnership that we have with elected officials who are engaged and want to drive change in their communities and are willing to do what is really hard work to make this stuff happen. And I certainly, having sat right where you're sitting, understand the complexity of doing that. So, it's a, it's a, a number of factors that would animate where we would think about doing a neighborhood rezoning. But when we do do one, and this is to the point that Chair Riley was asking a moment ago, and I certainly think this is an important one, we need to look at it not just as a zoning opportunity. This is a city opportunity for thoughtful planning, and that includes capital investment in neighborhoods and thoughtful capital investment to correct historic problems and also to spur the change that you actually want to see. So, it is a, it's, it's really important to us at this table to make sure that we get those component parts right and that we're not operating in a silo. The mayor has made this very clear. He does not want his agencies working in a silo from one another. We think he is absolutely right on that point, and that has, you know, certainly been the, a leading factor in bringing us all together to think about solving some, you know, new problems and also some existing ones, which I believe you may even have on your mind.
Well, a hundred percent. So, my district, we, you know, one of the things that, you know, I'm quarterbacking is a master plan. Do you think that all council members or all districts should have some sort of a, a master plan of something, of some sort that would work, that will help city planning do the best kind of planning they, possible?
I think it's incredibly useful when council members step up and show a path for change or evolution of their own communities, because it is so difficult, you know, as a political matter. And so, we really appreciate the leadership that you have taken on the North Shore to advance change, economic development, waterfront access, housing. advance change, economic development, waterfront access, housing, all of the things that you have made very clear that you want to see and that you need in that part of your district, and we agree. So it's, the short answer is it's very useful when it happens, and we're really excited to work with you on this one in particular.
Thank you so much, and the feelings mutual. Like I said, I associate my comments with Councilmember Riley when it means that, you know, to have a city planning and you as a commissioner and having been in this role, I think it's extremely helpful to help guide us through this extremely, you know, important process and difficult, challenging process. So I just wanted to kind of drill down on another piece. I know everything is all about filling vacancies and being part of the Finance Committee, OMB had testified that 25,000 vacancies and they gave, they associated a number, but you testify that you're bringing on 74 new people. And I just wanted to ask, what are your recruitment strategies? And I know you mentioned, you know, that you're having those open houses, but I think it's, I think it may be something else. So I'm just curious as to why is city planning having, not having an issue attracting people? I mean, retaining people is always going to be an issue with the salaries, but what are some of your recruiting strategies that we can kind of maybe adopt for our other city agencies?
Thank you, and I, you know, I appreciate that, and we brought on the 74 and we're bringing on the additional 17. And so we were very proud of our efforts to go out and do that. That included, you know, participating in hiring pools every six to eight weeks. You know, we hired an assistant director of strategic planning and human capital to help us think about how to find people, attract people, bring them in. We have continued a popular paid internship program where people come into our agency, they see what we're all about, they get to see the incredible, talented, brilliant people that I now get to work with at this agency, and it is a great sales tool, because people see what we're actually doing and they want to be part of it. And we're looking to expand that with a paid fellowship program for post-graduates and graduates, although I can't credit that with our hiring in 2022. It is something that we are embarking on and we think will continue to help us going forward.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Salamanca, for allowing me to answer those questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanks. We will now recognize Chair Farah Lewis, followed by Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca. Thank you, Chair Grodnik and your team for being here today. Some of my questions were asked already, so I'll ask them in another way, because they're very important. I'll start with this quick question on the BLAST program. And I think it's a great way to improve the services that DCP provides. It's an ambitious initiative. Regarding the advanced proposals and the four prongs mentioned in your statement, I wanted to know, would that require new hires or do you already have existing staff?
We actually got some new hires for the purpose of implementing the BLAST initiative, which is important, because we think that not only will those people allow us to fill gaps that we've had, but also will help us to move these applications and these processes better and faster. So yes, we agree with you that the BLAST initiative that the mayor has introduced is really important and will be meaningful in speeding up our land use processes, and we believe that we have the people necessary to be able to implement it.
Thank you for that. Within the new Community Planning Engagement Division, I know Chair Riley asked about it already, I wanted, I noticed that you could either have staff or consultants, right? So I wanted to know, are consultants on staff or is there like RFP process for your consultants?
So for our community engagement, those are members of our staff. Periodically, there is a consultant, which is done through the Economic Development Corporation, to engage more, in more depth with a specific neighborhood, which is something that is presently happening on Atlantic Avenue, for example, with Councilmember Hudson. That is not done through the Department of City Planning. The only consultants that we engage at the Department of City Planning relate to the highly technical environmental review, which is best done by a consultant rather than keeping all of that expertise in-house where you, you know, use it only periodically. But that's the, those are the consultants that we use.
Got it. So my question, my second follow-up question is, does DCP intend for the new division to replace engagement and facilitation work previously done by consultants?
No, we do not. We do not. We expect them to be really productive in our ability to reach more communities, more people, but I don't think that they will have the capacity to replace that.
Okay, thank you. Quick question on the rezoning process and the impact on FY24. Chair Riley mentioned earlier, what projects will DCP undertake in the FY24 funding for neighborhood capital investments?
So that is still an open question for us. We are looking at this with our partner agencies as well as with OMB, to think about how to identify those projects that will be really meaningful for communities in their own right, and certainly to support some of the neighborhood planning work that we are already embarking upon. So that is, that is an ongoing conversation, but we look forward to reporting to you what those are and how we think they will actually impact the lives of New Yorkers.
Would Community Board 17 happen to be one of those projects you're considering?
So we appreciate Community Board 17's efforts in talking about a community-based plan, and we look forward to continuing that conversation with them. We've been having some, well, the conversation with Community Board 17 have gone well, well longer than my tenure, by about four or five years, but we look forward to continuing that conversation with them.
Thank you. I'm happy that's on the record, they're probably watching. And I didn't hear much, I heard about the other districts that you're working with in the Bronx and in Central Brooklyn, particularly in Councilmember Hudson's district, but I didn't hear much about the IBX program that Kathy Hochul had proposed and DCP's involvement. So I wanted to know if you could share a little bit about that.
Yeah, we think that that's a really exciting initiative, the idea that we would be adding new rail opportunities connecting parts of New York City that today are underserved. We will want to engage as that project gets closer to formality and detail, to think about what sorts of land use changes would be appropriate. You know, transit-oriented development is central in our minds and in our efforts. We want to make sure that, you know, we're being thoughtful about adding density homes closest to where you can move around the city. That's certainly animating our work with the Bronx Metro North stations. It's also really important with the, you know, with Atlantic Avenue and also with Manhattan's M districts. So yes, taking advantage of that moment and that opportunity and thinking about our own land use changes is something that we definitely would want to do.
We look forward to that.
Thank you. Us, too.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. Now, we will hear from Councilmember Sanchez.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much, Chair. And following, I think I'm just following up on a bunch of comments and notes by Councilmember Lewis, but the first one is, it used to be called the Triborough Express. So if we can, you know, bring back the Bronx into that conversation, that would be phenomenal. We also have underutilized rights of way, and that would be, that would be a boon for the Bronx as well. My question is around the Office of Community Planning and Engagement, or the Division. Super exciting to hear about this office. I think I, you know, we have all who work in this space have heard, you know, so many criticisms lodged at the Department of City Planning for being a Department of City Zoning, right, and not doing as much of the thinking about the big picture, you know, New York City planning framework. And so, you know, this is a longstanding recommendation that many advocates have had, and very excited to see it and see you move in this direction. So I would like to ask, and I'm just going to lump my questions together, first around the staffing for the new division, are there new proposed staff for the Division 1? And then two, similar to Councilmember Lewis, thinking about District 14, we have the largest plot of real estate that is underdeveloped in the City of New York, one of the largest, if not the largest, which is the Fordham Landing development. And Fordham Landing is a, it's an assemblage of sites that has 2,280 proposed units on it, 50,000 square feet of retail, 800,000 square feet for life sciences, and all in all, a $3.5 billion development. And so, thinking about, you know, a huge asset like the Fordham Landing proposed development, how is the office going to be tackling and helping to tackle projects like this? You know, this, it is a private site, you know, fully recognizing that, but with so much potential to meet so many of the city's goals for affordable housing, for job creation, everything else, would just love to hear how the department is thinking about it.
Great. So first, on the community engagement, it's a team of seven, and we look forward to, you're seeing them around plenty and doing more and trying to find ways to not just rebut, but actually correct that impression that this department is just one thing or another. We really recognize that we are in partnership with the council, with community boards and our communities around the city, and we want to project that and we want to show that. We know we're not going, it's not going to be 100% agreement all the time, but we want to make sure we're talking, at least on the same, that we're on the same playing field and talking about the same facts and being, you know, thoughtful and honest about that. To the question about Fordham Landing, we are already deeply engaged in the subject of Fordham Landing South and North. We know there's an applicant that is interested in developing the sites. There's complexity as it relates to access from the bridge. There's proposals that could create parkland and other opportunities and access. It's a really exciting opportunity for the Bronx and for the city. We are already engaged, and we are talking to the applicant and thinking about how we can best move this application. You are correct, observe, it is a biggie and one that is worthy of our time and attention, and we have been focused on it for sure, and certainly would be happy to run through with you, you know, where we are, where we think it's headed, how quickly we can get there, all of those things, if it would be of any value.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you, Chair. And just to follow up on that, I just, I want to make sure that the community is also intentionally brought into the process, right? So why I'm so excited about the Division for Community Planning. And, you know, I, this is, this is something that I don't need to repeat in this space, but, well, anyway, just about how much need there is in my community, right? We are the, one of the lowest-income communities in the, in the city. The way that you tackle inequality, if you ask me, is you pump money in, right? So pumping, pumping jobs, pumping opportunities, and I just want to make sure that we are using this opportunity in concert with DCP to, you know, train the community on land use, talk about land use, and really drive something that will benefit the community and the rest of the Bronx.
We'll do you even better. We'd love to chat with you about how we can best do that, particularly as it relates to Fordham Landing South and North, and to, with you, develop a plan that actually makes sense and that you believe would accomplish those goals. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you. I'd love to amplify, although it's hard to amplify, the commissioner's answers are so fulsome and yes, succinct. Thank you for your question about our Community Planning Engagement Team. I wanted to underscore a point about that team. It is a seven-person team, but they work in conjunction and really closely with the divisions throughout our department. They're working closely with our borough offices in particular, our planner liaisons, of which we have this, you know, we have incredible relationships with the community boards across the city. So while there may be seven people there, we really have, you know, 100 people, you know, in our agency who are actively working to improve and do our best work on community planning and engagement.
That's, that's great to hear. Thank you, Executive Director, and I have great respect for all of you. I'm very excited that Laura is leading this team, and I look forward to conversations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. So Chair Grodnik, I just, I want to go very quickly to my last question in terms of citywide zoning text amendment. The Speaker and the council have repeatedly raised concerns about the zoning for Economic Development text amendment, which must include holistic reforms of M zones to support industrial businesses and preserve essential core industrial districts. In short, city of yes should include yes to growing good industrial jobs and ensuring we have enough space for infrastructure and our transition to green energy, including offshore wind facilities. Can DCP commit to supporting full reforms of M zones, including creations of a core industrial district?
Thank you for the question, and we certainly understand the concern here and the competition for space in M zones. You know, as the Speaker noted in her speech yesterday, the current zoning tools are clearly outdated, and we're hearing that from, well, lots of players, certainly from council, but also from manufacturing businesses that are looking to grow and evolve in New York City and are finding that our zoning designations are out of date and prohibiting their ability to evolve over time. That's through high parking requirements or limits to single-story buildings, et cetera. And so we do need new tools here and want to have that conversation with you all about more opportunities to allow growth in M districts. And as it relates to heavy industry and protection of heavy industry at M districts, that is also a conversation that we are opening to, open to exploring and considering, whether there are ways to create new zoning districts to do that as well, and we look forward to having that conversation with you all.
All right, thank you. And I, too, look forward to having these conversations, as I have one of the biggest industrial zones in the city, which is the Hunts Point and Port Morris. Many areas are underutilized, and we need to be creative on how to keep them industrial but create jobs. With that, I want to thank you and your team for testifying today, and I'm going to hand it over to the council.
Thank you, Chair. And just as an announcement reminder to anyone wishing to testify, if you are here with us in the room, please see one of the sergeants to fill out a speaker card. And if you are viewing the live screen, live stream of this proceeding, you need to register at the council's website. Let me do that by clicking on the register for one of our hearings link at the council's website and select the hearing for 12:30 PM, March 9th, that's today's date, Technology Joint with Land Use, and then submit your information. That's for those who wish to testify remotely. And for everyone else, there is also the option to submit written testimony by email. You can send that to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov.
Thank you, council. So now, we will take a two-minute recess, and next up will be the Department of Technology. Thank you council. So now we will take a two-minute recess and next up will be the Department of Technology.
And I'm, I need to, uh, listen, we all know that we have limited resources. When I used to be activist, I used to be a fellow CDO and thinking that I was only a, for limited resources. When you are a BMT and you're not gonna be sitting with the Speaker and you have to make decisions about who's the employee that we had this year, then you have to decide where to use the resources. As we need as much resources as possible, I take it. Give it and I take it, and I would use it. But what I can say, Mayor Adams increased 18% of employee last year. He added almost 40, 40 million added this year in the middle of the district. I can offer more support from any major, that I want to give for you. From the speaking, that for you, also we go as advocate for the DOT, so I'm more resourceful.
So what you think?
We also, um, we also, um, recruit staff, we have to, sometimes just one way, three.
Luckily, MT has left the building. But in terms of, like, because you got the 18% increase, have you applied it to the salary range that you're, like, advertising right now?
Yeah, I think, I think the Commissioner said it right, we're never gonna be able to create a private sector, but I think we have other, um, opportunities that we offer. Not only that, our benefits package, city's benefit package, my pension is, is a big factor when it comes to recruiting. But I, I think, you know, if you're asking me, will we ever create a private sector now, you know, I think.
No, no, what I'm asking is, on the job post, have you increased the salary ranges?
Yeah, and, and I would also say, just going back to Mayor's announcement, DC 37 deal, there's gonna be a 9% increase come May, which would of course help. And, and if you don't add it to what we say, what we know is that the private sector tends to offer high salary in any area. However, we, we offer all the things, high prices. When someone come from Harvard and offers something that they can build potential class, that they can rent the city, the state to rent in the nation, that everyone across the nation is looking about how New York City at its time, the large numbers of like, they also pay off the rest of the, of the street. People also know that, you know, they work certain hours a day, but they also get a lot of pay when they work in COVID. So as this private sector, province, living area provide higher salary, we in government also provide all incentive that they will never find it on the place.
Also, um, according to OMB, for the current fiscal year, DOT saw attrition of 270 full-time employees. How many new hires has your agency added during the current fiscal year?
Thank you Chair for that question. And I also would be remiss to acknowledge the tremendous work that our workforce continues to do even in challenging times. So, um, I think we want to make sure that we start there. As for the retirements, we are keeping up with the vision in terms of our hiring, plus a bit more. I think the, the, the job fairs that we're doing, the updates and campaigns that we're doing, will certainly help that, but we are certainly keeping up with the vision.
Um, does DOT plan on conducting outreach in neighborhoods to solicit feedback from local communities prior to launching any major transportation project?
Yes. For the first time, the agency has a, first of all, the, the agency will be bringing a person that will be working at the community, engaging the women and the community, a engagement that's focused about building community engagement. I also will create a position for a director of immigrant affairs, making a connection between DOT and the youth community. As I said before, when I went to a side academy, meeting with a local council member, the president and owner, I ended that day meeting with 40 interfaith leaders. Because what I feel that in the past, the conversation about transportation and planning was more something related to the highly educated, middle-class citizens. Now, what we are saying, attacking the idea, someone that is a person, not anything, speaking person, someone that has paid my dues, someone that has contributed to the city, someone that has been living in the circle of my whole life, is that that part of the city make a larger percentage of interpeople that they have never been invited to be on the table to talk about transportation, to learn about transportation is the most important equalizer that those that, that those that live where we want.
And, and, sorry Commissioner, and how will DOT ensure that the master plan for jet, um, for student projects and funding are equitably distributed amongst city neighborhoods?
We have the formula in place, and Eric, if you, if he can take it through the formula and, and his president in resurfacing, I don't think that the city didn't have the best seating place to address equity, as, as we do resurfacing, and we do many other points. Sure, and it's something that we were very proud to introduce as part of the Streets Plan is the priority investment areas, where we explicitly look at places in the city that may have been historically underserved by the agency in terms of infrastructure. We look at, uh, the populations of color, low-income populations, uh, population density, as well as where we've actually done projects in the past. And we, when we use that as a tool to make sure that as we plan new projects, we are serving, we're overserving those communities that have got less previous than this one. We, we are always guided by the idea, we always want to make sure we're working at locations with the highest crash rates. But we also use that as a lens to make sure that we're not leaving parts of the city behind.
So do you already have a kind of populated in terms of what communities, do they have a formula of guidelines where you're doing a project by project?
Yeah, yes, it's, it's, it's in the Streets Plan, we can, we can, you see that. And, and, and one thing that also the Mayor Adams, we did was also, as you know, working with the previous council body, you know, we created the Agni Community Media way office in the city here. And, and as a result, also the council basically, that based like 5 years' salary of zero, we also use the money to also go to the, connect also to the Agni Community Media, not only within the community, but community, but also local media. So what we are spending, what we are addressing is to show that the voice of the community, I think, are early in the process. As we look for an employee that is knowing about, here, we have a point that, no, say yes or no. So then of course, the, the leadership, each of you council members, playing this, my commitment to go and walk through every single council district to hear you feedback. I have not been in any of the district that you have aligned, anything that is important for you. If I have not come by, we, we, we so, so that's what we will continue doing. And I do it because this is what Mayor Adams has instructed the whole council members, build a close working relationship with every elected official and be sure that you know that here, when the city is relying on those leaders that we have, the local media.
So I'm gonna answer two questions under research, research and streets, and I'm gonna yield to my colleagues, um, just to make sure that they get their questions in. So DOT previously had a goal to repave, um, 1,300 lane.
Mic check for the Zoom, mic check for the Zoom.
Copy.
Thank you.
The Royal Arena is, is composed by 1,200 men and women that worked under her leadership. And we feel that they work together between the administration and the council. Make sure that also we base type of resources here, so that we have the funding necessary to have allowed for a contract meeting, aim of here purchase to 1,200 lane miles. And, and we, it is, is a good support that we have and provide the support that we need. We feel that it is a adequate amount to keep the street in its state over here.
Thank you. And I'm gonna yield to Councilmember Carr.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner, good to see you. Just doubling down on what the Chair was just asking with lane mile resurfacing. You know, in the two, first two years of the prior administration, they committed and achieved 2500 lane miles resurfacing, only for the Chair of this committee. And it was an astonishing achievement. It really.
All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Committee on Land Use. Lastly, we will hear from Do-It, and I will now turn it over to Chair Gutierrez, who is our Chair for the Committee on Technology for the Council.
Thank you Chair. Good afternoon and welcome to FY24 Preliminary Budget Hearing for the Department of Information Technology and Innovation, more recently known as Office of Technology and Innovation. I'm Jennifer Gutierrez. I'm the Chair for the Committee on Technology. Today's hearing is joined with the Committee on Land Use, and I would like to thank my colleague, Councilmembers Alamanca, Chair of the Committee for co-chairing today's hearing. The FY2024 Preliminary Budget for the, for Do-It totals $697.4 million, which includes nearly $155.7 million in personal services funding to support 1,637 full-time positions. The budget also includes nearly $541.7 million in OTPS, of, half of which, $275 million is allocated to contractual services. In the preliminary plan, Do-It's fiscal 2024 preliminary budget is $23.3 million, less than its fiscal 2023 adopted budget. This slight decrease of 2% is mainly driven by a reduction in technology services. Additionally, in the preliminary plan, Do-It's budget introduces significant funding in fiscal year 2023 for the onboarding of consultant resources to build the MyCity Project, an app, which we have learned from both previous hearings and the press, will be a one-stop shop for New Yorkers to access services, as well as significant funding for the build-out of a technology platform to support the administration's effort on the asylum seekers crisis. At today's hearing, this committee will focus on a range of components of the agency's budget and new projects to ensure that New Yorkers and city agencies receive the services they deserve and are entitled to. We will spend significant time on the status of the universal broadband capital projects that were announced in 2020. We'll also discuss funding models of more recent programs such as Big Apple Connect, which is intended to provide free broadband and cable for NYU residents. The committee is concerned about vacant positions across program areas and potential impacts on the agency's operations, and we will inquire about OTI's efforts to address these vacancies. We'll request a status update on critical services for our communities, such as NextGen 911 and 311 Customer Services. We'll explore OTI's ambitious 2022 strategic plan. And finally, in line with all of the other work of the Tech Committee, we will approach many of these questions from a lens of equity to ensure that everyone from New Yorkers we serve to those that we contract with are provided equal opportunities. I'm looking forward to an open conversation with Commissioner Frazier, OTI's strategy and budget plan, and hope that we can focus this, this hearing on concrete updates and progress. We look forward to working with you to ensure that city investments in technology provide long-term benefits to all New York City residents, regardless of the borough they live in, their age, their race, or immigration status. After the testimony, members will have the opportunity to follow up with questions. In closing, I also want to make sure that we thank our committee staff for their hard, hard work, including Principal Financial Analyst Florentine Kabor, Unahed Aaliyah Ali, Committee Counsel Irene Bayovski, Policy Analyst Charles Kim, and my team, Senior Advisor Anya Lear and Chief of Staff Anna Besendorf. And now I'll ask the committee council to please swear in the Commissioner.
Thank you very much Chair Gutierrez. My name is Irene Bayovski. I'm Committee Counsel to the Committee on Technology, and I will be moderating the hearing today. And we are pleased and welcome representative from the administration, Commissioner and CTO Matt Frazier, who will be testifying today, as well as Deputy Commissioner for Management and Budget, Deputy Commissioner for Legal Affairs, and Deputy Commissioner for Public Information. I ask you all, raise your right hands. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and answer honestly to Councilmember testimony, oh, to Councilmember questions today?
I do.
Thank you. You might begin your testimony.
Good afternoon Chair Salamanca and Gutierrez and members of the City Council Committees on Land Use and Technology. My name is Matthew Frazier, and I'm the Chief Technology Officer of the City of New York and the Head of the Office of Tech and Innovation. With me is Edwin Pemberton, OTI's Deputy Commissioner for Management and Budget, Chantel Senadus, OTI's Deputy Commissioner for Legal Matters, and Ryan Birchmeyer, OTI's Deputy Commissioner for Public Information. Thank you for the opportunity today to speak about OTI's fiscal year 24 preliminary budget, our recent accomplishments, and our priorities for the coming year. When I assumed my position as CTO and the Head of OTI a little more than a year ago, I hit the ground running. As you know, my first major task was to consolidate six different technology offices, the Department of Information Tech and Telecommunications, New York City Cyber Command, the Mayor's Office of the Chief Technology Officer, the Mayor's Office of Data Analytics, the Mayor's Office of Information Privacy, and 311 under a single entity, OTI. Bringing these disparate offices together streamlined overall operations and inspired a much higher level of collaboration among staff to support common goals. Once these, once, once these work streams synergized, OTI created a strategic plan to outline the path forward for technology across the city. We have proposed several strategic priorities that will underpin all of our future efforts, building a connected city to make access available to all, modernizing how the city, how city agencies deliver services, making data-driven decisions and operations ubiquitous in city government, powering up our tech sector for innovation and diversifying participation in the tech economy, creating the strongest, most secure, and best-valued technology service and team necessary to deliver on our priorities, and supporting our technology professionals and creating opportunities for them to grow. Fulfilling these goals require optimizing resources to the greatest extent possible. That is why one of our strategic priorities aims to further develop procurement processes and partnerships to create an IT procurement efficiencies and leverage citywide buying power. Last year, we undertook a review of historical citywide IT spend and surveyed city agencies on critical needs and near-future spending to identify high-impact areas for standardization. This effort will help expedite future funding requests and will assist in identifying areas where we can use our total buying power to lower costs and to include participation of city-certified MWBE in technology contracting. Another innovative way we've invested in our existing pool of resources is implementing a comprehensive workforce strategy through agency cyber command liaisons. We launched the inaugural New York City Cyber Academy this past fall to provide specialized training for these positions. And when, and we plan to expand this training program in the coming year. Further, we are continuing to undertake cybersecurity roadmapping assessments for government entities that interact with city systems, including elected officials. We welcome support and input as we take on this exercise. As we continue to execute our overall technology strategy, I want to emphasize, we're focused on achieving real, tangible results for New Yorkers. I'm proud to say that Big Apple Connect, the program that provides free internet and cable services to NYU residents, currently has an adoption rate of 76% and is being offered to more than 96,000 households. OTI conceived of this program, finalized contracts with Charter and Altice, and rolled this out to over 130 developments in less than one year. Thousands of New Yorkers who previously either did not have home broadband connections or had to prioritize the expenses of internet over other essential services have benefited from this program. We will expand Big Apple Connect to more developments in the coming weeks, and we will be thrilled to partner with council to get the word out. Another top priority we'll be rolling out in a few weeks is the MyCity application. As we previously announced, the administration's first priority is a childcare subsidy portal, which will streamline the process for parents and caregivers. Users' experience testing has been very successful, and we're looking forward to unveiling the tool for the council and the general public. As we work towards launching MyCity, we have coordinated with partners across all levels of government. Our final hurdle is getting a seal of approval from our colleagues in state government, whose subsidies are included in the portal. Before I, before I speak to the numbers of fiscal year 24 preliminary budget, I also wanted to take the opportunity to mention how rewarding it is to support and celebrate the milestones for some of our most essential, public-facing initiatives. Today, we celebrated 311's 20th anniversary, and starting this weekend, we'll be co-hosting Open Data Week, which has continued to expand over the past several years. It is, it is continued dedication of our OTI staff and the cooperation of sister agencies and offices that make these programs successful. Finally, I'd like to briefly summarize OTI's budget. OTI's fiscal, fiscal year 24 preliminary budget includes operating expenses of approximately $697.4 million, allocating $155.7 million in personal services to support the 1,637 full-time, full-time positions, and $541.7 million for other than personnel services, or OTPS. Intracity funds transferred from other agencies account for $137.6 million, or about 20% of our total budget allocation. Telecommunications costs are the largest portion of the intracity expense, projected at $103 million for fiscal year 23. For fiscal year 23, the preliminary budget decreased by $3.1 million, which is largely attributed to vacancy reduction savings initiatives. For fiscal year 24, the preliminary budget decreased by $9.7 million, which is also largely attributed to vacancy reduction savings initiatives. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I will now take council member questions.
Thank you Commissioner. And before handing it off to Chair Salamanca.
And before handing it off to Chair Salamanca, I just want to recognize our newest committee member, Councilmember Eric Kagan, as well as recognizing Councilmembers Abreu, Councilmember Holden, who is VZ, and Councilmember Chair Salamanca.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gutierrez. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, I just have a few questions, and I'm going to hand it off to my colleagues. I want to speak to you about the, some of my NYCHA developments, the Merrose Houses was receiving, was receiving free internet access from prior, from the prior administration. And it seems that when this administration came on, they put a pause on that contract for the Big Apple Connect. Are you familiar with that?
I would need more specific details on that front.
So, the Big Apple Connect, basically, Big Apple Connect is bringing free, high-speed internet services to NYCHA?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And so, prior to, prior to that, the administration, they were using what was called People's Choice Communications, a small NY, New York City cooperative that was basically, a small NYC cooperative coupled together by striking charter communication workers, was one of several ISPs left on the lurch by sudden reversal by the Adams administration. So, basically, what's happening is that there is a free internet access that's being provided to NYCHA residents, at least in my district, Merrose. And it seems that this administration has put a pause on that, and they seem to, they're going to go into a different direction. And in that direction, with the Big Apple Connect, they're going to be using Charter and Altice to provide these services, which, you know, they have a monopoly on, when we're talking about internet services in the city of New York. Can you just speak a little bit about why there was a new route going opposed to the route that was working?
So, in this particular case, oh, sorry, let me just pull this a little bit closer. How about now? All right, perfect. All right, fantastic. So, sure thing. So, when we look at that specific issue, the issue that we had at those developments between, with People's Choice, essentially, what had happened was their People's Choice had subbed the work out, meaning like they brought in another provider to provide a service to those developments. And due to a dispute that occurred, there was some, some impact to services. And what I mean by that, some equipment was removed from the site, and then all the residents that lived within those facilities that were dependent on those services had lost access. So, instead of the residents feeling the blunt of the dispute between the primary, who was awarded the contract, and the person that they subbed it to, we stepped in and we said, "It's not right that residents impact or feel that loss of services." So, what we did was we offered Big Apple Connect to the development. We brought in, we brought in the providers that serviced that specific development, and we gave them the ability to deploy forthwith, minimizing impact to the people that lived in the community. And before we stepped in, between the dispute between the primary and subcontractor, services were interrupted for over forty-eight hours.
Their services have not been interrupted?
No.
Okay, all right. I have not met with the, my constituents. I know we got in calls, and I will, I will be following up. And hopefully, who is your contact person so that my office can connect with directly?
So, Brett Sykov, which is our Senior Director for Broadband, he's our franchise administration, and he will, he will connect with the team accordingly. And I think for us, we, we take connectivity very seriously, and we want to make sure that those that need it get it as quickly as they can.
All right. And then, for my line of questioning, I want to talk about Link NYC. You know, in my past years as Land Use Chair, sitting in this budget process, going through this budget dance, we brought up the issue with Link NYC. So, fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, actual budget, actual budget indicates that DOIT collected a revenue of nearly twenty-seven million dollars on Link NYC in each of these fiscal years. Since fiscal year twenty twenty-three, adopted budget, DOIT recognized revenue of five point four million at adoption, and five point six million in fiscal twenty twenty-four preliminary budget, which represents a significant decrease in revenue. How much is the renegotiating franchise agreement with City Bridge? And how much money did the city receive since the new franchise agreement with City Bridge? And is it a yearly or monthly payment?
So, to answer that question, I will defer to the Deputy Commissioner of Management and Budget, Edwin Pemberton.
For City Bridge?
Yes.
So, City Bridge is making their payments from the sixty million. They're up to date. They have a payment schedule that's going until twenty thirty. And we monitor their retropayments from that debt and also their continued payment into the, into the program.
So, they're paying their debt and actials?
Yes.
Correct? So, what is their debt, you said? How much are they required to pay yearly on their debt?
On their debt, it actually has a staggered amount. It started at one point six and is moving into two point two, two point six. It keeps growing every year. They have paid twenty-eight point five million to date, and the remaining is thirty-one point five.
They're on schedule. They're on schedule for debt?
Yes.
Okay. They have not defaulted?
Has not defaulted.
All right. And then, in terms of the actials, what they have to pay every, do they pay monthly or do they pay yearly for their services?
I believe they pay quarterly, but they pay the city two point seven to three million dollars per year on their regular scale.
Okay. And they have not defaulted?
They have not defaulted.
All right. All right, my next question, we'll see if they pay on time, which they do. All right. My last line of question, I promise, mobile telecommunications. DOIT anticipates a decline of twenty-nine million dollars in revenue from mobile telecommunications franchises compared to fiscal twenty twenty-three adoption. Mobile telecommunications franchises bring the second-most revenue collected after cable television franchises. How can the council help? Can you, can you help us understand the decrease?
So, for that question, again, the Deputy Commissioner of Management and Budget will defer to.
So, OTI, we look at revenue trends on a quarterly basis every fiscal plan. We talk to our revenue task force at OMB. What we actually do is adjust the plan accordingly as we can until we see a consistent trend. Mobile is actually going up, as you stated, but it's updated every financial plan around the JAM plan is when we actually change the budgets. And we will go back to OMB and figure out what's the best baseline for that revenue source.
All right, so we don't, we don't know why?
Well, it's definitely increasing steadily because, again, we see more mobile, more revenues come from the mobile side than the cable side.
All right. I will follow up with another line of questioning. I will hand it over to Chair Gutierrez. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all so much, once again, for, for your testimony. I'd like to just spend a little bit of time on OTI's priorities for FY twenty-four. I know you touched on them a little bit in your testimony, Commissioner. But if you can just expand a little bit more on how, on just what OTI's budget priorities are for FY twenty-four and how you plan to implement the Mayor's blueprint vision, especially a year into, into this new office.
So, our budget priorities are focused, as we started the last, as we started the last year, moving into this year, many of those priorities have remained the same. And that's one, ensuring that we democratize access to city services. A lot of the challenges that we face and what our constituents face is we have a bureaucracy that's overly complex to interact with. And figuring out ways where we can streamline and simplify that process is one of the things that we're focused on. Within the next couple of weeks, we're looking to launch My City, which simply, which signifies a change to how we've done business historically, where we take the emphasis from the agency-specific service and we shift it to the customer, the person, the resident, that, that requires that service. In addition to that, what's coming from the childcare perspective, the other portions of My City that we're focusing on now, which include looking at workforce development and how we bring people into public service, looking at small businesses and how they grow and interact with the city and get access to the services that they need. And in addition to that, looking at other things that live within the Health and Human Services umbrella to see how we can bring those into a common platform. The key here is, as we move over time, moving away from individual systems and bringing them into a single place. It's like a snowball that builds mass as it goes downhill. It took a lot of effort to get the underpinning platform done. Now that we've got the platform done and we've got the first service, the things that come thereafter will come at a much more expedient pace. In addition to that, continuing to invest in areas where we've, where we've seen great success, areas like Big Apple Connect, where we offer it today to about ninety-six thousand households. And of the ninety-six thousand households, we have a seventy-six percent adoption rate. So, we're seeing a significant utilization of the service. Currently, we're in a hundred and thirty developments, and within the coming weeks, we plan to have an expansion that takes it beyond that. In addition to services like My City and Big Apple Connect, our, part of our fiscal priorities is also to ensure that we're not wasting city resources. So, part of the things that we've done was start up, we start up an office, Deputy Commissioner of Strategic Initiatives, to focus on coordinating technology efforts across the city. So, we've conducted a survey of all citywide significant tech programs that have an aggregated or projected spend of two million or more. We've looked at the vendors that we're looking to invest with, and we've looked at ways where we could leverage the city's total buying power into driving down those costs. In addition to doing that, we've looked at our regular recurring telecom expenses and looking, and looked at how we're expending money. There's a massive variance between what our big agencies and small agencies pay. And recently, we've coordinated between the heads of these agencies, and we're bringing streamlined wireless plans and wireless services across the city, which will equate to reductions that are well north of fifty million. So, again, we're focused on democratizing access to city services, making sure that in New York City, those that need access to broadband and other services that are, other services that are essential that they can get, we're focused on being fiscally responsible. And the final piece that we're focused on is making sure that we are working smart. And when I say working smart, it's leveraging the data that we have to ensure that we have KPIs, key performance indicators, that we can measure, that ensures that we're moving the needles forward from a progress perspective. As the Mayor has spoken about, New York City Stat, building a portal where we can track the performance metrics from the different verticals that we have across the city, and also building a portal where we can see the quality of our response to quality of service jobs like three-one-one. We're in the process of delivering those, and we expect by the end of the year to have significant, both internal and public releases around both of those toolsets.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think you expanded on this a little bit towards the end, but I'm curious on the streamlining process, right? That was, it sounded like obviously a top priority for the agency in this fiscal year. How do you plan on achieving streamlining with, you know, the reduce, the reduction in headcount? What are some examples of where you feel confident that the streamlining is going to be successful even with less people to potentially do that work?
Yeah, so when, when you look at how, how bloat occurs in an organization over time or how unnecessarily complex processes leaves itself to needing more people, I think that, that's a lot of what we, we suffer from today. So, by bringing in more automation, by bringing in capabilities where we can do things like pre-eligibility determinations so that those that are reviewing files can get the top-line information that they need so they can get to decisions quicker, like that helps reduce the burden on the staff that today is dependent on reading or pulling out information and going through that in a very manual process. A good example of this is childcare. From a childcare perspective, in order to submit or get access to childcare services today or childcare subsidies, it's a fifteen-page form that gets delivered to one of three different agencies. And every agency that gets that form, intakes the form, then has to call for an interview, then has to call for supporting documents, and then at some point, a determination is made whether that person is eligible for the service or not. So, by digitizing the process, making sure that all those required documents are submitted ahead of time, it reduces the administrative burden on the people that are responsible for that task. So, by continuously pushing more innovative, more automated toolsets that, that helps the workforce work smarter, it reduces our dependency or our need for more people, and we can shift those resources where we have them towards areas where we have greater needs around, around people.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I have a follow-up question about that in a little bit. I want to just wrap up on the FY twenty-four priorities. We noticed in the preliminary budget that it does not include any new need, any new needs for the agency's budget. Have you asked for any needs from OMB that you did not receive funding for in this budget?
So, at this point, everything that we have needed, we've received funding for from OMB. And any area where we have an additional need, we're looking for opportunities beyond what we've been provided funding for. We're looking for opportunities to realign and self-fund internally.
Okay, so you're, you are satisfied with OMB's response on the, on the agency's needs?
Yeah, so OMB, OMB is a, is a true partner. And what we've, what we've tried to do is, when we, given the fact that we are the tech authority for the city and that within every agency, there is a tech function and there is a subsequent tech budget, we've tried to reassess or realign our thinking instead of looking at it as an individual agency's problem, look at the city's tech need as a cooperative sort of, a cooperative task. So, the things that we're focusing on, making sure across the agencies is aligned with our top priorities. In areas where we need to increase funding because things are underfunded, realigning things that are less of a priority from other places and bringing that money into the appropriate places.
Okay. Well, I, I hope to learn a little bit about what those, what those shifts look like. I do also want to acknowledge Councilmember Eric Botcher, who's joined us. I want to get into headcount and vacancies. That's a big theme with this administration, this year's budget. And you, in your testimony, you also alluded to some of the vacant positions. I believe it's about the elimination of about a hundred and one vacant positions through this year's PEGs. Can you share with us a breakdown of these vacant positions by program?
Sure thing. So, to go through our vacancies and our existing vacancy rate, our Deputy Commissioner for Management and Budget will run through the details, and I'll fill in any additional context as necessary.
Thank you.
So, currently, the agency has two hundred vacancies based on the JAM plan numbers. We have a twelve percent vacancy rate. And what we're actually doing with OMB is negotiating areas of risk, you know, to make sure that, you know, any PEG targets that we have to meet are not coming from areas of concern for service levels such as three-one-one, risks such as cyber, and service such as information, infrastructure management, sorry. So, we're trying to make sure that whatever reductions that we have to meet are in the areas that we have seen some form of savings from consolidation, admin clerical lines, technology has made reductions. So, we're planning to make sure that we don't have any major impacts when we do those cuts.
So, can you just share, as of when are the vacancies at two hundred? And can you just list the item, the programs where those vacant positions exist?
So, for three-one-one, we have twenty, twenty-five vacancies, applications. We have twelve, I could just, forty-one is in strategic initiatives. Data analytics, fourteen, in a general counsel office. I could group them and send it back to you, but these are the main areas of vacancies.
Is that, and what was the one before general counsel?
There was data analytics, fourteen.
And general counsel?
General counsel office, we have twelve.
Twelve. Okay. And so, these are two hundred vacancies for which a hundred and one have been eliminated?
Right. After the hundred and one has been eliminated, we currently have two hundred vacancies. After, after the cut, we have two hundred vacancies left, and we're working with OMB to move on, on filling those two hundred vacancy lines.
Okay. Goodness. Okay. Do you have a sense of what the agency's attrition rate is?
Attrition rate, I believe, is like seventeen point five percent.
Also, I want to acknowledge Committee Member, Councilmember Vicky Palladino, who's just joined us. My next question is, given the crucial role, and you kind of alluded to this, Deputy Commissioner, but given the crucial role of the agency in supporting city agencies, do these vacancies pose any risk to your ability to run its operations?
So, as it stands, right? So as it stands right now, we have no, no risk around essential city services or operations. And the way that we manage headcount is to ensure that we staff up in the areas where we have our most critical needs.
What, and so what is the, what's the minimum amount of, of staff required to operate Cyber Command, for example?
So Cyber Command is, is an interesting, is an interesting example. Remember, Cyber Command was launched in twenty-seventeen, and since its inception, it's been carrying over a hundred vacancies. So a lot of-
All right, I'm so sorry, how, how many vacancies?
Over a hundred vacancies.
A hundred, okay.
Right, so it was an entity that was created from the ground up. So a lot of Cyber Command's initial operations came out of the Duet Information Security Arm. And then from there, there was some staff up that was performed, but it's still not at the levels that are necessary to, to, they've never been at a level that was necessary to take its vacant headcount under that hundred, that hundred-person threshold. So what we're doing on that front is, we've mentioned that we've launched our Cyber Academy. Across the market, whether you're in public sector or you're in private sector, cybersecurity is one of the most, one of the most sought-after skill sets. So there is a market rush in sort of pulling those resources in. So to abate that, what we've done is we've created a program, as also as part of the executive order that established OTI in New York City Cyber Command, where we've created cyber liaisons. So within every agency, they identified a resource that wasn't the CIO or the Chief Information Officer or the Chief Information Security Officer, that would have a mandate that was focused specifically on cyber. And from those agencies, we built a Cyber Academy where we could take those resources and build them at a level where they can run as a, as a senior-level cybersecurity analyst. Now, it's a process very similar to how the federal government, you take a special agent who's never done anything in cyber and build the capability to do that. We've modeled our program very much like that. So we are, we've had our first class go through, and we have about twenty, twenty-five people that's completed the first class. And then we have a second class that's going through this year, and we can plan to continue to expand the program. As it stands right now, in addition to the work that we, the resources that we have at Cyber Command, we also have external partners that help us complete and, and ensure that New York City and all of its surrounding assets are safe.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you. So there's no, there's no number, just because there's no amount that you can share with us of like an ideal number of staff for, to ensure the city's cybersecurity?
So in areas, there, there isn't a specific number, and I think it's largely dependent, there's a number of factors that go into how many people you need at any given moment. And in areas where we have more needs than others, or areas where we have capabilities that we need filled, we also, in addition to our staff resources, we also use partners to do that, just like any major organization running a similar-sized entity.
Okay, and what, what restructuring or shifting, in your words, have, has the agency done to, that may have led to both vacancies and new roles?
Apologies, can you repeat this?
So what restructuring within the agency, you said in a previous response that you're looking at, you know, priorities, and like where you can shift budget in, in areas that make sense, and move them into areas like where, where you need them? So can you give us some examples of where, where that shift or where that restructuring happened?
Sure, so when you look in the budget, one of the areas that we've, we've done a significant restructuring, and as many of you may be familiar, Nice One, New York City Wireless Network. So Nice One was, for those of you who aren't familiar, just a, a quick run-through. Nice One was a carrier-grade wireless network that was commissioned in the early two thousands to support mobile telecom needs for agencies. Duet had a baseline, and was, Duet had a baseline in its budget of around forty-one million to support Nice One. When we came in, we looked at the work that was left to decommission the Nice One network, and we're at a state where that net, where that network has been fully decommissioned. Now, in order to support programs like Big Apple Connect, it was important that we found funding sources that could be baseline to ensure that, once we provided this service, we didn't leave our constituents in a place where we had funding that would dry up, very similar to the Affordable Connectivity Program, because that funding, that funding from the federal end is provided year-to-year. So we took the baseline Nice One funding, and we used it to cover the funding to support Big Apple Connect. So that's one, one way where you can see like how that materializes. One of the other things that I mentioned is we looked at wireless telecom across the city. We looked at rate plan variances. And what I mean by variances, a good example is, for our largest, our largest agencies, they may have been paying twenty-seven dollars per month for a cellphone, right? For our smallest agencies, they may have been paying maybe thirty dollars per month, thirty-two dollars, thirty-three dollars per month per cellphone, right? In some cases, more, in some cases, in extreme cases, maybe a little less. So what we've, what we were able to do was we were able to renegotiate with all of our telecom carriers, and after the renegotiation, we were able to drive down the average cost for a rate plan significantly, by over, by over twenty percent. And that projected savings will carry us, once standardized across the city, over twelve million per year. And then when we eliminate excess devices, we should go up significantly beyond that. And our plan is to use those excess funds to cover other programs like My City and other areas where we have needs.
Thank you. And then I just have two more follow-up questions regarding attrition. You said earlier that it's about, the rate is about seventeen point five percent. Can you speak to what efforts OTI is making to reduce attrition and attract new hires?
So currently, we're, we are, we've expanded recruitment's efforts significantly. We've partnered with entities like the US Army to get veterans that are coming back into areas like Cyber Command. They've built dexterity responding to global cyber conditions. So what better place to come than New York City Cyber Command? In addition to working with entities like the Army, we're partnering with higher ed institutions to create a more robust pipeline so that instead of people that are coming out of college trying to jump out into the private sector, we can attract them directly into government. In addition to that, we're working very closely as we focus our digital equity efforts. Now that we've brought things like broadband into public housing, and we standardize it like utility. In addition to that, we, we are looking to bring in digital workforce upskilling and career pathways. So imagine, one of the things that we're working on within the next year is we want to ensure that, when we look for talent in areas where we have the highest need, and now that we've brought connectivity into areas where people have historically been underserved, we want to bring digital skills program, digital skills programs into those neighborhoods. In addition to that, provide them a pathway where they can come into the city's workforce. So when you look at our entry-level positions, our entry-level cyber analyst positions, our entry-level network engineering positions, after completing a twelve-week program, twelve-to-sixteen-week program, you can train someone, certify into one, and get them an entry-level job to cover one of the needs that we have on, on one of those fronts. So in addition to our efforts partnering with external entities, partnering with higher ed, and looking at our community-based, our community-based efforts to build, build stronger workforce out of our public housing community, in addition to that, we're working on, of course, other things like recruitment fears and partnering with other entities that do workforce development in New York City.
Fantastic, thank you. And I'm, I'm excited to learn more about the, the veteran program and obviously expand more on the higher ed program. I think that sounds really good, thank you. Okay, and then I just also want to recognize Councilmember Julie Wan, who's joined us. I think I'm gonna, out of respect for my dear colleagues, I'm gonna hand off some questions to them. And first up, we have Councilmember Eric Kagan with a question. Yeah, look at that.
Thank you very much. So I'm a little bit jumping ahead of the schedule, sorry. So we have questions here about a program, Link NYC. And I know it's like a little bit further down. Thank you very much again for this opportunity. So like, I represent Coney Island in Southern Brooklyn. And when people read about this program, of course, everybody likes it. So, but is, do you have any plans to, to open some of this kiosk in Coney Island area?
Of course, of course. So what, what, what we're trying to do right now is accelerate our deployment of links, especially in the areas that need them. Coney Island's a great example of an area where we have high traffic, where it doesn't matter where you live in New York City, everyone knows where Coney Island is. And the moment that it gets warm out, that's where everyone gravitates to. And we want to make sure, no matter where you come from, as long as you come into, as, when you get to areas that have that high traffic, that high demand, making sure that broadband is open and available, like here. So we're, we're working very aggressively to get that connectivity into those neighborhoods, and you can rest assured that it will be there. For specific timelines, we can have the office follow up. And if you have a specific area of need, we can look to prioritize those accordingly.
Thank you, I would love to have it in Coney Island, of course. And it's not just me, it's community.
I love a fan of Link, yeah, yeah, it's great.
Thank you, oh, great, fantastic. I just want to come back to a couple of the FY twenty-four questions in the preliminary budget. Can you share what positions the agency currently has open and is actively hiring for?
So a list of, of vacant specific titles, or?
I guess, I know in the last hearing, we talked about, a little bit about like the positions that you are all hiring for with regard to blockchain planning. So I just, if there's any, any of those examples that you can share with us, and I guess in the spirit of the agency kind of looking at priority areas versus non, are those, can you share what some of those positions are that you're hiring for?
Sure, so, so one of, one of our higher priority areas and a significant portion of our vacancies comes from the cyberspace. So looking into bringing, bringing in cybersecurity analysts, threat hunters, you know, data engineers to mine that information, those are one, that's, that's one area where we're doing significant amounts of recruitment, and we have a lot of postings out. In addition to that, application development, right? And data visualization, making sure that we have a strong and robust city workforce that's capable of building applications, and not just building them, but sustaining them after they've been developed. And from a data and analytics perspective, as you heard, we're trying to work very smart, right? And we want to make sure that for the things that we build that, and for the things that we build in the areas where we have performance demands and needs and expectations from the public, that we can create the visualizations and tools that are necessary so that we can work effectively. So in addition to our cyber needs and our application development needs, business analysts and data analysts to help us do that, that sort of work is high. In addition to those two areas, three-one-one is an area where we're always recruiting, right? As we said today, we've celebrated three-one-one's twentieth year. And currently, we only have about twenty vacant positions within three-one-one. But we're looking to ensure that we continue, continuously staff that model because the public expects a certain quality of service, and we want to make sure that we maintain that.
Thank you. And the positions, the vacant positions under three-one-one, the twenty-five or twenty-eight that I, I think I heard both of you say, those have not been reduced, correct?
Those, those have not been reduced.
Okay, they just haven't been filled, okay, fantastic. He wants to ask a question, but I'll, I'll give it a second. Can you, you're good? You want, you want to ask a question? Okay, I'm gonna pass it off to Councilmember Botcher, who's gonna ask a question.
Hi, how are you?
Good, 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 how about yourself?
Good, thank you. So there's a hundred and one vacant positions being proposed in this budget. How many of those vacant positions are out of the three-one-one program?
About twenty, twenty-five, is that?
Twenty-five currently.
Twenty-five current.
So there's twenty-five being, that are proposed to be eliminated from the three-one-one program. What are those?
Oh, apologies, no, sorry. There are twenty-five current vacancies in three-one-one? There are no planned eliminations from the three-one-one program?
Great, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Very important that three-one-one be kept whole, if not increased. It's so, so important, I don't need to tell you how important it is. It's the link of constituents to the government to get problems solved, and we should be building it up, not, not cutting positions.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. One of the things that we've seen, so a fun fact is that we survey the performance of the three-one-one operators. In addition to that, we survey the performance of agencies as they respond to three-one-one conditions. Now, for three-one-one operators, our, our satisfaction with three-one-one service itself, nine out of every ten people that we survey rate the performance of three-one-one operations nine out of ten, at least a nine out of ten, which means that nine out of ten New Yorkers are very satisfied with three-one-one's performance, at least the performance that they get from a call center operator. And with that expectation, it, there's a mix of having the right number of resources, making sure that our response time is quick enough when we answer a phone call, and we want to make sure that we maintain that, so I, I completely agree.
The, the nine out of ten favorability that you get for the, the operators themselves?
That's correct.
When is that recorded? Is that immediately after the phone call with the operator?
That is correct.
And can you report on the favorability rating that you get after the case is closed out?
Yes, we can.
What is that?
It depends on specific service line, but we, one of the things that we're working on now is creating a dashboard to make a lot of that information public, right? And I think one of the things that the mayor believes is, in order, as he says, as he says often, if you don't inspect what you expect, everything is suspect, right? So we want to be-
It's great Eric Adams, Adams-ism.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I love it, I love it. And I think that, I think for us, in that, there's a key lesson. And if we don't inspect what the public expects, right? So when we respond, they expect a high quality of service. They expect us to respond in complete and close a condition that they've called about. And if we don't inspect that expectation and make sure that we're doing that, then how can we surely and truly measure how successful we are in fulfilling that? So one of the things that we've worked on as late, of late is building a dashboard to track the public satisfaction for response to three-one-one conditions, post-call. And in that, there's a lot of revelation in terms of areas where we could be doing better. So in terms of providing an overview of which, of what that looks like per service line, we can certainly follow up after this and, and, and look at providing a preview of what that looks like.
I would love to get those numbers. I think the call from the operator, in my experience, is almost always a good interaction. Yeah, I always, in my personal experience, I always get a good interaction when I call, although I normally do it digitally. It's the, the follow-up from the complaint that, to me, is arguably the most important. And that is a conversation I'd love to follow up on, and, and the portal, very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, I also just want to shout out Councilmember Botcher. He's in his committee, but he actively participates, and I, I love that you join us. Thank you so much. Councilmember Wan?
Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez. Hello, good to see you all. I had a question about the telecommunications costs, since it's the largest portion of the expense at one-hundred-point-three million. Is that going to, for the next fiscal year, do you have an earmark for homeless shelters, for emergency shelters, since we are getting a high number of requests for these family shelters who have children who are looking for internet connectivity in their hotels?
Yeah, so family homeless shelters across the city, last year, we were, we embarked on a campaign to provide wireless across all the family homeless shelters. And as of today, I mean, as of early last year, mid-last year, we, we completely provided connectivity to all of those family, family units.
So for the new shelters, I can trust that they will be brought online because I have many shelters in my district who are, that are newer, that are waiting to be connected.
So the, I, you, you can rest assured if they meet the, if they're a family shelter, that's the expectation.
What about for the men's shelters or the women's-only shelters?
So we are currently looking at a program to expand, to expand the existing program that we did to carry to all of those. But we wanted to make sure that we prioritize the family homeless shelters because they have school-age kids that need that resource so that they can, they could compete in school. In addition to that, we're looking to expand into those other areas as well within the coming year, within this year.
Okay, and then for Big Apple Connect, congratulations on having seventy-six percent adoption. That is extremely high-
Thank you for the partnership.
-for our government program. So is there going to be an increase in that amount for this next fiscal year so that you could increase the contracts since there are, there is such a high demand for NITOS that are, that weren't part of the initial release that want to be?
Yeah, so within the coming weeks, we have an announcement where we'll, where we'll focus on an expansion of Big Apple Connect that will carry it to more developments. The mayor, the mayor made a commitment, both in the first hundred days in the state of the city, of what that would look like. And we expect that we will, we will meet all of the commitments along that lines to, to public housing. So short answer is, yes, we plan an expansion, and we, we plan to get to more NITO residents very soon.
Okay, because we are still waiting for Ravenswood houses in my district. They're clutching on, waiting for their cable TV and internet, so I hope to hear good news soon.
Very soon.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I wanted to just ask about, again, just about the, the hiring process. Can you, is, is the hiring process for these vacant positions any different than some of the other city agencies? And if it is, can you just walk us through what that process looks like?
Yeah, so I think that, for these, for these positions, many- Yeah, so I think that for these, for these positions, many of them, like our 311 positions, it's very similar to what civil service appointments looks like across the city. There's a li, there's an exam that you take, there's a list that gets called, and then we conduct interviews. Those that respond, they go through an eligibility review and then we bring them on accordingly. For our open, our non-competitive hires, it's a process very similar to what you would have in your traditional, your traditional employment search. It's collecting candidates, interviewing candidates, bringing them on board, and partnering with the Office of Management and Budget and, and the broader team to ensure that asked candidates are identified, that we can streamline the hire.
Got it. What, what is the ideal number of positions necessary for your agency to deliver key services? Do you have that?
So, I don't know if there's a specific number, and I think that we, that, that number is a moving target depending on what, what we are focused on and what we're working on at any given day, at any given moment. The one thing that I can say with certainty is that we have not, nor do we expect to be near a threshold where we expect any disruption of any critical service that the agency provides. And nothing that has inhibited our ability to deliver any of the commitments that we've made. And I think one of the things that, one of the things that we're, we as a city and as all other verticals across the nation are facing is that the job market is, it's a high-demand market and there's a resource shortage. And in order to get around those challenges, we're trying to build those talents and build capabilities locally.
Thank you. My last question around this, and as you know, we're trying to do a job fair in our district. Are, is the agency working with the C37, for example, to do these job fairs? Or how, how are you thinking the best way to help recruit and just raise awareness about the urgency to fill these vacant positions?
Yeah, so a lot of the challenges that we, we have in terms of awareness, we're trying to partner with both unions, higher ed, faith leadership, and also other recruitment firms across, across the city to bring resources in. In addition to that, we're looking to rebrand like the NYC.gov sort of jobs portal, right? I mean, if your first, if your first experience with any entity is solely judged based on their web presence, you want to make sure that that sends a strong message around who you are and what they can expect as part of that experience. So, the mayor's been a big believer and a big, a big supporter of updating and streamlining that process and making sure that it looks like what, you know, the modern workforce expects from a recruitment site. So, in addition to working with external and internal entities to create a talent pipeline, we're working on redefining our digital presence so that we can attract more talents as well.
Thank you. Thank you. I look forward to that. Next, I'm gonna pass it to my colleague, councilmember Vicky Palladino for questions? You're good? Okay, okay, thank you. I want to follow up, and this could be very brief, Commissioner, on NICE Win because I think we're all really excited to close that chapter in the city's history. Can you, can you just confirm whether, or just actually give us a breakdown of any of the NICE Win costs for, for this fiscal year, if there are any?
No, so this fiscal year, NICE Win has been decommissioned. And what you see in the budget that's represented as a new need for Big Apple Connect, what we've basically done is we've said, "Let's return that or close the budget line NICE Win." So, going forward, we don't have to look at NICE Win again in the budget. So, let's close the budget line and let's reappropriate it under Big Apple Connect so we're fully transparent in where the money's actually going.
That's right. Okay, great. And so, and the last time there was a budget item was FY23?
That is correct.
Okay. Great. And so, the breakdown and transition off the system, is there a time, is that already been completed? All of the infrastructure breakdown, all of that stuff?
So, all the infrastructure breakdown for the network that supported NICE Win is completed, all that stuff.
Great. So, there's no more equipment on rooftops?
Not that I'm aware of, and if it is, it's squatting.
It's what?
It's squatting.
Okay. They have rights too. Great. My next question is around MWBEs. We've talked about this at length at so many of our hearings. I think this is something that obviously the administration and the council as a whole were super committed to. I understand that in FY24, the contract budget total was 274.6 million, 40% of it, which represents OTPS. And the agency budget covers 222 contracts in the same fiscal year. So, my question is, how much of the contract budget is allocated to MWBEs in, how much was allocated in FY23? And how much do you anticipate to be allocated for MWBEs in FY24?
So, to respond to that question, I will defer to the Deputy Commissioner for Management and Budget.
So, for MWBEs, the department has seen an increase in, in usage. Currently, we have awarded, looking at a period from fiscal year '20 last quarter to fiscal year '23, we have increased close to 400% black MWBE vendors. Dollar values went from 522,000 to 2.6 million. Black women vendors, we went close to 900%. It went from 90,000 to 879,000. And Hispanic women, we've increased 400% from 93,000 to 483,000. So, what we've been trying to do is using the new threshold of $1 million, we've been pushing agencies to make sure that they actually target MWBEs first, especially the, the other underutilized categories. We've seen a lot of increase from, from us because of our spending, but we're also trying to make sure that the other agencies follow the lead on using MWBEs.
So, so more spending in this area has allowed for more applicants and more allocations of MWB contracts?
Right, the threshold actually helps agencies now to utilize them more. We, we do a lot of master contracts agreements so that people actually could use it. So, we're targeting MWBEs in our master agreements for citywide usage.
That's great, great. So, more investment in this area.
Right.
Gathers in more representation. Amazing. And do you have a sense of which program at OTI holds the most MWBE contracts?
So, I would say that's highly dependent on how we classify. So, in terms of direct MWB contracts, we can get you a summary of what that looks like. But in addition to direct MWB contracts, we have larger city requirements contracts with, with entities like SHI. And through those requirement, larger requirements contracts, I believe this year, that accounted for, through partner spend with them, over 400, 400 million in MWB spend that went through one of the major contracts. So, I think depending on how we look at it, either one of our larger requirements contracts through partner spend with MWBEs or direct from city, we can get you a breakdown catalog of what that looks like.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. That would be great. Are there any issues related to contracting MWBEs? I don't know if you touched on that, but are there any?
We're, there's no issues, but we're trying to do more outreach. At the end of next month, we're doing a big outreach for MWB vendors just to show them exactly how the city system works. A lot of them need some education on how to apply for these, these bids. So, we're trying to do something at the end of the month for them.
Okay, thank you.
But, sorry, end of April.
End of April, okay. My next questions are related to the preliminary capital commitment plan. For FY24, the agency's capital commitment plan includes 631.3 million between FY23 and FY27. Can you share how many active capital projects the agency currently has?
Yeah, so our Deputy Commissioner, Management and Budget, will go through that as well.
And if you can also, if you have in front of you the breakdown of those projects by, by borough? Do you track it that way?
By borough?
Yeah.
No, it's usually tracked at a program level.
Okay, okay. But, I guess not for today, but I think it would be good if we could just get a sense borough by borough because we're always talking about equity and if we could just have a sense of that, but I understand maybe not for today.
Yep, I understand.
Thank you.
So, currently, we have 150 million in our current plan, 150.4 million. Of that, 107 million is committed. And these projects mainly relate to application, modernization projects.
To applica, so is that the MyCity app?
No, well, modernization of existing systems.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. So, that's the only capital project?
No, well, there's a few, but I was just categorizing them. There's, there's over 20 on this list, but I can give you a group. Yeah, there's over 20 open CPs right now for projects related to modernization.
Okay. And then, I know you don't have the borough-by-borough breakdown, but how does OTI work to ensure that the capital spending is as equitable as, as it can be? Obviously, related to where the demand is and where the need is.
So, from, from a capital perspective, in terms of resources where we get them from, I mean, in ensuring that it's equitable, we depend largely on the thresholds of our MWB contracts, which now brings that, with the new million-dollar threshold, it brings us a higher capability to leverage that. In addition to that, in terms of where resources are spent, it's largely driven by demand. When you look at programs that we have like Link and New York City, a significant portion or the significant majority of new Link kiosks that will go out will go out in the areas outside of the business districts of Manhattan, which will bring it into areas that historically been excluded. And those same sort of approaches are what we use to streamline and rationalize where we place investments for other types of services.
Okay, okay. And is the, does the expense budget capture all of the costs for staff, maintenance, leases, costs associated with capital projects?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Great. I would like to move on to your fave topic and mine, Big Apple Connect.
Oh, all right.
I know, I know, I know. So, the November plan added 15.7 million in FY23 and 27.2 million in out-years for Big Apple Connect, which is a program like we all mentioned intended to provide free in-home broadband and basic cable television to NYCHA residents. Can you clarify the source of funding for Big Apple Connect?
So, the source of funding from Big Apple Connect is what was once classified as NICE Win funding. We have closed the NICE Win budget line and we've re-appropriated it under Big Apple Connect.
Fantastic. Given that the goal for Big Apple Connect to connect approximately 300,000 New Yorkers with internet by the, the end of this year, can you tell us once again how many New Yorkers are currently connected?
So, currently, we have 74,000 households connected. And of those 74,000 households that we have, of that 74,000, of over 96,000 households that are eligible for access.
Okay, great. And do you have a sense of what that breakdown is by borough? I know that there's the designated NYCHA developments.
Yeah, so we can, we can certainly provide a detail by borough of where, of the total subscription rate. We've actually built a dashboard in which, again, some of the things that we're also looking to do is create more transparency around what we're doing. So, we built the dashboards to summarize the deployment of Big Apple Connect, which we hope to launch soon. And it'll give the public both transparency into where the services are offered and how many people are consuming the services in each development.
Where does this dashboard live?
Ah, see, the dashboard lives currently in our development environment, but it's expected to go live soon.
Soon, okay. I'm excited.
Yeah, we would gladly give you a preview as well so that you can see.
I, I just love to be involved in color scheme selection. Hell, like, let me be in the room. Can you, Commissioner, can you walk us through the signup process for residents that are in the developments that are eligible for Big Apple Connect?
Yeah, so it's, it's a pretty seamless process. In many cases, we have signup days that are local at the developments themselves. We work with both the Tenant Association and our Community Affairs Team within the NYPD to make sure that we have resources available on-site to hand out flyers and let people know the service is available. This, the process is simple as calling one of the providers that offers a service in your building, confirming details and the unit number, and scheduling an installation date. No other information is necessary. That's all, that's all is required.
And, oh, sorry.
If you're an existing customer, it's just calling the development, calling, you didn't even have to call. So, we created it in such a way that if you were an existing customer and those services you were consuming, that they would automatically get flipped to the Big Apple Connect program so that you didn't, you didn't have to go through any manual effort to do it.
Great. And so, there, have there been any instances where residents are being charged?
So, not for any of the services that are covered under Big Apple Connect. But Big Apple Connect, what you can consider that is like a baseline service. So, you have basic TV and free high-speed broadband. Now, if in the household, there's someone wants to make a determination to carry something other than what we cover with Big Apple Connect, anything that's different or the difference, the household would have to cover. As an example, if the household, instead of basic TV, they want any one of the premium channels, like they want HBO, Star, Showtime, whatever the cost associated with that additional service gets passed on to the household, we do not cover that.
Okay, so you don't have any instances where folks just were being charged for the basic service, especially those that, that were making that switch because they maybe already had Altis or Charter?
That is correct.
Okay. And you said something earlier, and I don't know if maybe I hadn't missed this before, but the agency, you all have a community affairs team?
No, so working in conjunction with the NYPD's Community Affairs Team.
Oh, why, maybe it's not intuitive for me, why Community Affairs Team to help do this outreach?
Because in, across all of the city's housing developments, there are police service areas, PSAs, that cover the housing developments.
Right.
You have resources-
Except Cooper Park in my district, so not all of them.
We can, we can work on that. So, the, the public, the police service areas or the housing areas work directly with the tenant associations and they have a very robust relationship. So, instead of, for any service hitting multiple, hitting a tenant association from multiple directions, we try to have a coordinated approach. So, if we have community affairs teams that are working with the public and the community to build strong relationships, one of the things that they can use in their tool belt is also saying, "Hey, by the way, do you also know if you live in a household, you don't have access to broadband, these services are available free?" So, it's also one of those tools that you use because, again, the, our, our police department is more than just a police department. It's also the bridge between the community and the city because they have a lot of touchpoints with the community. So, we want to make sure during those touchpoints, especially the ones that aren't related to enforcement, they have the capability to talk about things that can help a household. And with things like broadband, it may not be the thing that may be the silver bullet to bring crime completely down, but it's certainly a tool that can be used to help provide alternative services, alternative access to tools that can bring violence conditions down in neighborhoods.
This is, so this is the first time I'm hearing about it, and so, again, maybe I just, I hadn't caught that before. But what has been the feedback from, from the various PSAs? Because I, I often think that, that the city is asking a lot, is asking the PD to do things that they're not typically trained for. While I understand that in this scenario, they're just, they're potentially just asking, I'm just curious if there are other avenues to, to do that outreach outside of the PD. Perhaps, just because, again, that connection doesn't seem like seamless to me. Are there other instances or other nonprofits that, that are aiding in this? And I, you know, I represent a community that I think has a, my NYCHA residents have a decent relationship with PSA 3, for example, but it just strikes me that, that they would, you know, in any interaction, whether it's positive or not, would, would kind of, you know, drop Big Apple Connect on them.
Yeah, so I, I think there's, there's a couple of ways that you look at it. And I wouldn't look at it as it's a primary function on any given day for them to do that. So, you have to remember that we have resources, like the community affairs team may be local in the developments themselves. They may be there doing any other activity that they'd be doing on any other given day. But also in a conversation, just being aware that that broadband is available and those services are available, it's something that they can use to continue to build that relationship with community. So, when we went live with the first development, which was Hughes Houses in Brooklyn, within the confines of PSA 2, one of the things that we did was, in addition to working with the Tenant Association, we worked with the PSA Commander, we worked with the NYCHA, we worked with the NYCHA Tenant Association. We had, in addition to that, we had teams from both Charter and Altis, their community affairs teams, and we had other organizations partner to get out, to get the word out that these services were available. So, as, as I, as I mentioned, this isn't one of those things where it deters them or distracts them from the day job.
They're not, I guess, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but they're not, they're not doing the application for folks?
No.
Are they, that's what I'm asking?
No, no, no.
I want to, I personally want to reduce, you know, this, just the, those interactions, so I think it's, I just needed that clarity, okay?
No, no, nobody's doing applications for folks. It's just awareness that the program exists.
Okay, they're just dropping it, I understand, okay. So, does the administration plan to renew, oh, no, excuse me. I guess after year three, and I'm not, if you want to just clarify where we are in the three-year plan, because I know the Big Apple Connect piloted maybe at the beginning of FY twenty-three?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Or mid-through fiscal year twenty-three, because that's when-
It's like around September, I remember the, the announcement, okay, great. Are you, is your timeline still set for those three years? And do you anticipate any additional funding for this project beyond the three years?
As I mentioned, the funding for Big Apple Connect was already baseline in OTI's budget. So, it isn't like we're looking for new funding. And part of the magic of using baseline funding is that it's there.
Right.
The Big Apple Connect contract was established primarily for three years with two-year option to renew. And then, from there, we can renegotiate to see if we bring rates down lower than where it is. But as it stands right now, by leveraging baseline expense costs, there is, the, the need is already carried in the, in the baseline operating budget.
Okay, and does, and that is just, is that, that's expense?
That is expense.
Okay, and does the administration plan on renewing those contracts with still Altis and Charter? Or, you know, I have to bring up again the conversation around Verizon, kind of what is the plan to extend the project after that three-year term? And who are you all thinking about working with?
At this point, we're evaluating options, again, to see what's the best path forward. We, we try not to be in a position where we make a decision and we don't look back. We want to make sure that periodically, we sanity check to make sure it's the right thing to move forward with. In terms of partnering with anyone beyond Charter Communications and Altis, certainly, the opportunity is open and it's possible that that may occur. And the key for us is minimizing impacts residence and making sure that we get them access as quickly as possible. A lot of the prior efforts were focused on these big monolithic programs that, you know, hadn't, that did not really deliver any material success. And I think for us, who we partner with and how the administration moves forward is largely dependent on who can deliver those services as quick as possible and reliable, the most reliable service as well.
Right, it's, but it does sound, someone on the, like, someone on the outside, like Verizon is, is a candidate, are those conversations happening?
Yeah, so we had conversations with Verizon. They were part of the initial rounds of conversation. But we were unable, at least at this moment, were unable to come to an agreement in terms of the service costs. I mean, it, just a long story, very short. There's a big disparity in the rates that Verizon provided versus the ones that Charter and Altis provided. And for us, it, it, it was disproportionate. So, spending excess expense for the same service is something that wasn't fiscally responsible.
Okay, I would love to, I guess, get a better sense of what those rates are at a later, later time. Do you have any effort, do you have any examples of coordinating with any local internet service providers?
Yeah, so, the local internet service providers outside of the RFEI that exists within NYCHA right now, where we have eighteen buildings across six developments where those services, they're partnering with local, local providers to provide broadband into those areas, that, that's the, the largest, the largest opportunity that we have running at the moment. Beyond that, we're continuously assessing the availability of resources and opportunities to bring those providers into, into the ecosystem.
Okay, my question, my next question is related to the cost of, I guess, the build-out in these NYCHA developments. So, I know Chair Salamanca had asked about Melrose in, in your district. In that example, before Big Apple Connect moved in, there was a provider there before. Who incurred the cost of that infrastructure?
So, it, it, it depends, I'd have to look at the direct contract and tell you. It may be the provider, the city may have subsidized a portion of it, but I, I, sitting here at this moment, we can get back to you.
Okay, okay, it's important because I, I, my next question is, in these Big Apple designated developments, are they, is the development allowed to receive infrastructure build-out from other internet service providers, other than Spectrum and Optimum? Or are they, are they the ones exclusively doing that build-out?
No, so they, in, in those developments, we pre, we, we do not place a prohibition on any other service provider that wants to offer service to that development or to any development. However, we will only cover the services that are offered through Big Apple Connect. So, a household can choose to use a different provider or move in any direction that they want. The power is in the household's hands, but if they leverage, they leverage Big Apple Connect, it has to be one, through one of our authorized providers.
Okay, and my last question in this topic under Big Apple Connect, so, when, when the Big Apple Connect program was, was launched, although I understand it was piloted months before, back in September, we, at the council, were still kind of like trying to grapple with what was going on, right? We had Councilmember Menon's NYCHA broadband program, which, which seems to be very successful. I know Councilmember Wong signed up, folks, she did as well, under the Affordable Connectivity Program, to, to essentially do the same thing, to deliver broadband to NYCHA residents at, at no cost. What, what was the rationale behind, behind launching Big Apple Connect and using taxpayer dollars to fund a program instead of federal money?
So, the, the emphasis on federal money is an interesting one. So, the ACP program, which is twenty-nine ninety-nine per month, is a program, yes, subsidized by the federal government, but then a household has to make a determination on whether they cover their home internet or they cover one mobile device. And in that case, you're making a household determine whether they have access in their home versus having access outside. So, what we, what we saw as a need, especially when we looked at the fact that in many housing developments, the average was less than, of, of, over forty percent of that, of those developments didn't have access to broadband. And then, when we looked at historic acts, historic events that were, as you said, were successful, I mean, it really depends on how you define success. I mean, for us, for developments that we've provided services to and the ones that had had access to programs longest, we've seen adoption rates go from sixty percent or fifty percent to over eighty percent. So, what we've seen is a significant uptick in both use and subscription over time. And for us, the fact that we had of that, that significant portion of the developments that weren't covered, we had school-aged children that didn't have access to resources that they needed, is a problem. So, the way that we look at it is that instead of having our constituents, our residents, dependent on services that may disappear, because remember, the federal ACP program isn't baseline, it's year-to-year approved. We built a program that was functioning off of baseline operating expense that was going into a vacuum that provided little utility to the city. And in addition to that, we've partnered with both community and the organizations to increase adoption rates. So, when I look at a representation across the city, in, let's say, in your district as an example, we have nearly a thousand people, actually, it's about nine hundred people that have subscribed to Big Apple Connect. And across the city, we're at, again, seventy-four thousand of the ninety-six thousand that are eligible. As we continue the deployment, we expect to get north of, nor, north of two hundred thousand. And with that, you know, the, the simple, I, I just short of it is, in situations like this, where we can say undoubtedly that we've provided more free or access to broadband in one year than any administration has done over an eight-year term, one may argue with the method, but no one can argue with the effectiveness of what we've done.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Sorry, I'm just being rushed over here. Can you share how much of the budget is allocated for MyCity Portal?
So, as it stands right now, the specific allocations for MyCity, our Deputy Commissioner of Management Budget can give you an overview.
So, currently, MyCity is, disfisked, is four million dollars, and that's to take care of the initial build-out of MyCity.
Okay, and I know that the, the app is going to continue to evolve. Do you have a sense of what that cost will look like?
So, the costs are heavily dependent on the services that we consume. One of the things that I mentioned earlier is that we did a survey of all the city tech programs north of two million. So, what we're looking at now is, instead of spending the, spending any of that money in an independent system that lives outside of MyCity, how can we take those investments and point them towards a consolidated platform? So, the specific budget around MyCity, depending on the services that we consume, will shift, but the significant majority of the funds for MyCity is already allocated to tech programs and agencies that would have been standalone. We're just bringing them into a single ecosystem.
Thank you, and are we still looking at an end-of-this-month launch?
We, we are, we are very aggressively looking at an end-of-this-month launch, but what we-
There are thirty-one days in this month, Commissioner.
I, I am very aware, very aware. We're working very closely with the state. As I've mentioned in the testimony, that's the last hurdle. So, the MyCity program for childcare is built and it's available, and we'd be happy to provide counsel with a preview, so that you can see. We've tested it with families that, that have applied for services through the traditional means, meaning the paper-based process, and we've gotten a tremendous amount of feedback that it's significantly better and easier than not just what they used to do, but any other system that they felt from, from the city. So, we are very hopeful that we will get to get it launched by the end of the month. And the long pole in the tent at this moment is just getting through the state, the state approval.
Great, my last question are related to technology service, too. I think one of the most important agencies is DSS. And obviously, we've gotten a lot of feedback from, kind of where the falloff has been with the agency's inability to process these applications quickly enough. A lot of it has to do with, with staffing. What is the agency's role, if any, in technology service on SNAP specifically?
Yeah, so, we, we have started a process to review not just, but, but not just SNAP, SNAP, SCRI, DRI, cash assistance, and looking at how we can streamline those processes. As you can imagine, for entities that's, that's existed for over, you know, almost over a century, there, there's lots of ways that we can create efficiencies and how we both review and approve those sorts of applications. The one thing that I would remind counsel is that a lot of our processes and some of the inefficiencies aren't regulated at the city, the city level because a lot of that funding is provided from the state. So, what we're trying to do now is streamline the process by which people both apply and how interviews take place. So, looking at ways where we can increase the amount of interviews on demand that occur. So, instead of waiting for someone to come into a center, being able to do an interview virtually, looking at the process that they use to apply the information that's collected to make sure that we're collecting as much information upfront as possible, and we're reducing the amount of times that people have to supply the same information. So, imagine being a family that's getting cash assistance in some way, but then every quarter, you have to update and provide a copy of your passport. It's like, how often does your passport expire, and why do I need that every month, right? Those are, those are areas where we, it seems like an undue burden on the families that are dependent on these services that we could eliminate by, by being more smarter about how we collect and keep that information. So, for us, that, those are some of the areas that we're looking, working on with DSS. And I, I'd remind counsel that OTI's role in the city, we're not a managed hosting provider or a managed service provider. We are a business partner to the city to ensure that we're using technology in the most efficient and effective ways.
Thank you, I think that, out of respect for everybody here, I think that that is it for my questions regarding, lucky you, play the lotto today, Commissioner. You know, we love marathon rounds, but I appreciate, I appreciate this. We do have a couple of other questions, if it's okay to get to you separately after today's hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much, I'll pass it over to Chair.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, thank you for attending today's hearing. We're concluding this portion of this hearing on technology. And we have counsel, we have individuals for public statement?
I understand we have two remote public witnesses signed up to testify and who are both currently logged into this proceeding. We will first take public testimony from William Spiezak, who will be followed by Paula Segal. William Spiezak.
Hi, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, you, uh-
Okay.
You have to-
Great, too nice, thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Will Spiezak, I'm the Senior Program Associate at New Economy Project, a citywide organization that works with community groups to build a just economy for all New Yorkers. We are the co-founders and coordinators of the New York City Community Land Initiative, a coalition working to expand community land trust, or COTs, to ensure permanently affordable housing and equitable neighborhood-led development. Since fiscal year twenty, the City Council has supported COT organizing education, technical assistance through the Citywide Community Land Trust Initiative. We serve as a technical assistance provider for the initiative, which has helped to catalyze the growth of COTs in low-income, particularly black and brown neighborhoods across the five boroughs. COTs are gaining recognition as one of the most effective ways to address our city's affordability crisis, combat displacement, and advance racial equity in housing and land use. We currently have twelve hundred homes in COT portfolios or pipelines, according to HBD, and COTs are stewarding dozens of affordable storefronts for small businesses working to develop community and cultural space in historically redlined neighborhoods. We thank the City Council for its vital support and urge you to continue funding the citywide COT initiative this year for fiscal year twenty-four at three million dollars. With this enhancement, the initiative will support twenty organizations, including new COTs in Edgemere, Queens, and Flapbush, Brooklyn, and expand urgently needed COT organizing, legal, and technical assistance. We urge the City Council also to ensure robust capital funding for the acquisition, development, and preservation of affordable housing and community space in order to support COTs and their mission. We urge you to fight any proposed budget cuts, especially to agencies like HBD, DSS, DHS, and other agencies that would threaten the housing security of thousands of New Yorkers. By giving communities shared ownership and control of land, COTs serve as a bulwark against predatory development and displacement. And by maintaining affordability over generations, COTs protect public investment in housing and other community development. So, please continue to support and invest in COTs this fiscal year, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have another speaker?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, if Stuart Reed is here in the room with us today, we have one individual signed up to testify in person. We will hear from Stuart Reed, who will then be followed by Paula Segal, I see you.
Good afternoon, members of the New York City Technology Committee, Chairman Gutierrez, elected officials, and guests gathered here today. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about technology and digital equity in New York City. My name is Stuart Reed. I'm the co-chairman of the Smart Community Initiative, TSCI, a five-on-one C-three not-for-profit partnership of public housing resident leaders and veteran New York City community technologists who have come together to help improve the quality of life for our residents utilizing innovative technology applications and services. TSCI testified before this committee on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, regarding equal access to the internet in New York City. In that testimony, TSCI talked about the decades-long history of its principles in providing fiber and wireless free access, applications and services to public and affordable housing residents in Harlem, the Bronx, and Brooklyn. We talked about how there will only be technological equity when residents themselves, when we take control of the technology solutions deployed in our neighborhoods. And finally, we spoke about how our group, TSCI, brings resident training, skill development, and economic opportunity to our communities as it creates a resident-based technological ecosystem that is both self-sustaining and innovative in its approach. While we at TSCI are extremely disappointed that after almost two years of vetting by the previous administration, where we were selected and designated for a contract, which would have literally been a first in order of magnitude for a NYCHA resident group, despite being the only resident group in the country to be certified as a provider in the federally-funded ACP program to provide internet, despite being recently granted an OVS license by the FCC, the largest ever granted to an African-American- the largest ever granted to an African-American resident group, somehow, once again, the forgotten among us were forgotten again. We will be remiss in our testimony if we didn't recognize these facts. Today, I'd like to applaud Mayor Adams and CTO Matt Frazier for the Big Apple Connect program, which is bringing free internet connectivity and broadcast TV service to thousands of underserved residents in NYCHA. With one bold initiative, the city has probably done more than any previous administration in helping to close the access divide in our low-income communities. However, we feel this is not enough, given some of the major issues affecting many of our communities. We need meaningful economic opportunity, training, and skill development for our residents who are going to be in the same dire need of income. Even if we all have free Big Apple Connect internet in our homes, we will still be poor tomorrow. TSCI believes that we should always help folks to be smarter, that training and engaging our residents in learning and providing the technology, solutions, applications, and services themselves is what we need to improve the public safety and quality of life in our communities. It is this kind of solution that helps everyone, this is TCI's mission. We look forward to further collaboration with the city in this regard, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your statement. Um, do we have another testimony?
We have one additional, uh, witness registered to testify, we will now hear remotely from Paula Segal.
Thank you so much, uh, good afternoon, my name is Paula Segal. I'm speaking today as senior staff attorney in the Equitable Neighborhoods practice of Take Root Justice. Take Root works with grassroots groups, neighborhood organizations, and community coalitions to help make sure that people of color, immigrants, and other low-income residents who've built our city are not pushed out in the name of progress. Um, my remarks today are really addressed to the land use committee, and I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure if they're still here, um, but like the new, like New Economy, um, where, uh, where my colleague William works, we are a member of the New York City Community Land Initiative, which is an alliance of over twenty groups that are creating and supporting community land trust organizations in neighborhoods in all five boroughs of the city. We at Take Root support this brewing movement for affordable, community-controlled housing, commercial, and community spaces through legal services to COT members of the, of the initiative and to other groups exploring the COT model. We provide everything from education, on ori- orientation incorporation, to transactional representation in negotiating ground leases and joint venture agreements. Our work and the work of our clients would not be possible without a contract with HPD that is the result of this council's Community Land Trust Initiative. Since fiscal year twenty, when the council established this initiative, we've seen the demand for our services and the services of our partners grow exponentially, and COT organizing flourish in every borough of the city. The amount that's allocated in the preliminary budget for this initiative is exactly the same as it's been in the last two years, despite this growth. So just like to, uh, echo my colleague's remarks and request an enhancement this year. With an enhancement to three million dollars, the initiative can support new community land trusts in Edgemere, Queens, and in Flatbush, Brooklyn, and expand citywide education, organizing, and technical assistance to meet the growing and urgent need for community land trust. Equally importantly, the budget must include capital funding commitments to support COT-driven revitalization of buildings that fell into disrepair while under city ownership, like tenant interim leased buildings recently acquired by our clients in the, uh, East Harlem, Albario Community Land Trust in Manhattan, and the Kingsbridge Arboretum in the Bronx, for which community visiting process is now underway. Um, if you don't, if you don't mind, may I finish? I think I, I heard.
Please, you have five seconds.
Thank you so much. Um, so this council has made great strides in ensuring that such public properties are disposed of to community land trusts and other not-for-profits that can be used for the public good, but without capital commitments to support those new owners as they work to reverse decades of disinvestment, such dispositions are at best a gesture, and at worst, the offloading of the city's problems under community-based organizations. And I've submitted written testimony with, with a few more details, thank you so much for the extra time.
Thank you for your statement, uh, counsel, do we have anyone else? No, all right, seeing none. I want to thank my colleagues, uh, Chair Gutierrez, Chair Louis M. Riley, for helping hold today's hearing, and thank you to the public for your testimony, as well as all of our administration's panelists for joining us today. Council staff will be following up with any additional questions for the agencies in the coming days. Thank you to our council staff and to the sergeants, today's meeting is hereby adjourned.